Welcome everyone to the town of Greater Nappany special session of council for the seventh day of May twenty twenty five. Just before we get started, just want to remind everyone this evening's meeting is being live streamed via YouTube channel. So welcome to the folks that are here this evening. Welcome to the folks that are home watching and welcome to the folks that will watch tomorrow, the next day or the day after. Just before we, we'll, we'll call the meeting to order and then we'll do our opening proceedings with respect to our national anthem. So whenever you're ready, Shannon. Thank you, everyone. And we'll, we'll start off with our closed session meeting. We had a closed session meeting this evening just before, before this regular session of council. So we'll look for a motion to rise and report from our closed session moved by councillor Shank seconded by councillor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion opposed, motions carried. I'd like to report this evening in closed session, council received legal advice regarding staff report SR eight seven four dash twenty twenty five on this agenda. Moving forward, we'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented moved by deputy mayor Cowver, seconded by councillor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion opposed, motions carried. Is there any disclosure of culinary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. First matter on this evening's agenda, items for discussion, R F T dash U T dash twenty twenty five dash zero one. Nappany W P C P tender award. I see Mr. Nobes and Mrs. Hamill come up to the front and Ms. Kelly as well. So folks, whenever you get settled in there, I'm not sure who's going to start, but you're more than welcome to start and you've got the floor. So thank you.
Thank you worship and through you to council. With me this evening is Ellen Hamill and Christie Kelly. And tonight we're going to be going through the tender submission, recommendation of the award and the financing framework for the water pollution control plant expansion. We also have Nathan Murphy in to our, to our left to assist as needed. While it's the three of us here this evening to present, it's also been a heavy lift by a number of staff, current and former over the years within finance and infrastructure services as well as council to get us to this point, and we are grateful for everyone's contributions to date. A quick project overview, the overall project goal was to, is to replace aging infrastructure with new enhanced treatment to dramatically reduce partially treated wastewater during bypass events as a result of heavy flows entering the plant and to provide further growth opportunities for the community through new development. The new plant would be located immediately west of the existing site, which is shown on the right hand side of this image on the slide and consists of new headworks, new activated granular sledge tanks, tertiary treatment, UV disinfection and an operations and control building. So a bit of project history, in twenty eleven, the town completed a municipal class environmental assessment. This was brought on as a result of high daily flows being experienced on a routine basis at the plant. The project reviewed several options to address the high flow issue and made recommendations based on a multi criteria analysis approach with social, natural environment and economic impacts as key drivers in recommending a solution at that time. The EA was then amended in twenty nineteen to identify the preferred treatment technology being an integrated fixed film activated sledge process to reuse existing infrastructure as much as possible. In twenty twenty one, the EA was then further amended to incorporate an advanced treatment system being an integrated surge and toxic mix sequencing batch reactor process, which was estimated at a similar capital cost as the fixed film process. However, during preliminary design was determined that the anticipated cost would be significantly over the projected budget at that time. So finally, in twenty twenty three, a value engineering exercise was undertaken to review all available technologies to the municipality to achieve the desired outcome of addressing the flows and allowing for further growth. This recommended ultimately the aerobic granular sludge system for which the detailed engineering design and tender has been completed. On this slide, we're showing the historic average daily flows being experienced at the plant. It to, to date, we've been capturing flow rates on a, on a, on a yearly basis. This is just a snapshot over the past ten or so years. We're also showing precipitation that is experienced on average throughout that year. So as you see, high precipitation being the red line, you'll see flows increase and as precipitation declines, the flows also decline into the plant. Between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty one, there were a significant number of capital upgrades that were undertaken to tighten up the system. This was to reduce overall inflow and infiltration into the collection system to dramatically reduce flows being experienced. So while we see both a drop in precipitation between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty one, there are also a lot of capital upgrades that were tightening up that system to put back some capacity into, into the plant to allow for growth to continue. Ultimately, we're nearing the, the tipping point for the plant and we're getting close to that, that nine thousand, approximately nine thousand cubic meter per day rated flow rate. And with the planned growth in the community over the coming years, we would certainly be exceeding that and being prepared for growth is, is a key, key item that the municipality needs to be prepared for, and that's ultimately what this project would help us do. So on this slide, we're showing a bird's eye view of the site, the new facility on the left, the existing facility on the right. Much of what you see on the right hand side of the image would be decommissioned and ultimately demolished in the future. And what that would do is provide room on the site for further capital upgrades and expansions when required decades, anticipating decades into the future. But there still is a lot of footprint available on this site after the existing plant infrastructure is removed so that we could plan for further, further projects down the road. So ultimately, we're looking to increase the hydraulic capacity of the plant, eliminate bypassing during peak wet weather events and modernize the process to reduce overall capital lifecycle costs and to comply with the Bay of Quinny remedial action plan to reduce, to, to provide for a better effluent leaving the plant. The plant was initially constructed in nineteen fifty three as a primary treatment facility, was then upgraded in nineteen seventy eight to a secondary treatment facility. Twenty eleven was the initial EA and twenty twenty was a preliminary design report that looked at the proposed at that time treatment technology. There was then another addendum in twenty twenty one, followed by design phase two in twenty twenty two. And in twenty twenty three, the detail, more detailed design began after the value engineering exercise that I spoke about previously. In that same year, the, the design and construction of the maintenance garage between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four was undertaken. And in twenty twenty four, last year, council approved the contractor pre qualification, which laid out which contractors would be eligible to submit a, a tender submission for this project. And here we are today, we have the tender, tender documents. We have the tender submissions, which Christie will be going through for council momentarily. And we're looking to commence the project as soon as reasonably possible following award of the tender this evening. In twenty twenty six through twenty twenty seven, we would see the, the project continue. And midway through twenty twenty seven or towards the end of twenty twenty seven is when the commissioning of the plant would be undertaken. And through twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight and onward, bringing that, bringing the new facility up to full operation is, is the anticipated timeline. So why, why this, why we need this project ultimately? We need this for the anticipated growth of the community. So we are anticipating a significant amount of both residential, commercial and industrial growth within the urban settlement area as well as modest growth within the rural area. So we are anticipating additional rural growth that would have the need for sewage disposal through septic tank disposal. So that is being planned for in the design and throughout the construction of the project. Most of the existing processes will be abandoned, as I mentioned, and this will provide future expansion opportunities on that site as we get to full build out and ultimately far down in the future when there is a need to further expand on the site. We have nearly sixteen hundred dwelling units approved that are either in the construction stage or are considered shovel ready. So draft plan approved, site plan approved, final plan of subdivision approved. And these units were highlighted in our funding application to the province, which helped get us the amount of funding that we ultimately did from the province. So this new plant would provide for the capacity up to an anticipated, an approximate four thousand new homes in addition to a mix of commercial and industrial growth. So a balance between residential and non residential growth. And as we see this new development proceed, the assessment growth of the municipality will ultimately grow, which helps to provide additional operating and capital revenues for the municipality for future planning. At this point, I'll turn things over to Christie and we'll, we'll be bouncing back and forth between Christie, myself and Alan through the duration of, of the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So as you're aware, in the fall of twenty twenty four, we pre qualified five general contractors, three electrical and four mechanical contractors to bid on this project. The tender opened for the pre qualified contractors to review and submit on January twenty seventh and closed on April first. Only the, the five general contractors were able to bid on the project as they were required to partner with the mechanical and electrical contractors that were pre qualified. Partner with them on their submission. So four out of five of the G C's submitted bids and all four were compliant. We are recommending awarding the contract to Peak Construction Group with the lowest bid submission of seventy five point five million dollars. In addition to the general contractor work, Peak will utilize internal resources for the mechanical work and will be working with Sheridan Electric as their electrical contractor. So the, the construction tender, I just thought we'd go over a bit of what that entails. So it is essentially the construction of the facility. They are to supply and install all the buildings and equipment that you saw on the previous rendering. It includes a new headworks, AGS tanks, our operations building, which will have a new SCADA system, which we're really, really excited about. It'll help allow us to monitor the plant and, and adjust flows and, or adjust processes accordingly via a large computer. Currently, we're manually adjusting valves. So we're getting into some modern technology. It'll include a tertiary and UV building and rehabilitation of parts of our existing anaerobic digesters. In addition to that, the construction tender includes the pre selected equipment that was approved by council in twenty twenty four, I believe. And this was kind of expedited to allow us to create the engineering drawings around the equipment we knew that we were going to go with. This also includes provisional items, including excess soil disposal and some digester brick repair work. And we've also included a contingency allowance of four point five million dollars in this project. I think it's important to note, and we may get into it at a, later into the presentation, so I apologize. But the, there's four million dollars here that is set aside for tariffs. We all know there's some uncertainties with the way things are right now, and a lot of that pre selected equipment is being purchased from this, the United States. So we've allowed that contingency allowance in there for, for such a thing. And this is a good opportunity to pause for questions.
Yeah, go ahead councillor X.
Thank you worship. I'll ask the obvious question because I know the four or five people watching at home want to know, did we, is the equipment available for purchase in Canada or other countries? And if it was, was there a large price difference and that's why it's been sourced out of the US? At that time, it, it was cheaper.
So the pre selected equipment, including the AGS tanks specifically and or the activated granular sledge process is a, a United States based process. So that was purchased again before the talks of these tariffs, we had to pre select these pieces of equipment. We've certainly are working to do our best to ensure that, as I'm sure much of, much of our country is to purchase locally as much as possible. But a lot of these items were unfortunately only available from the United States.
Thank you.
Thanks councillor X. Go ahead councillor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Christie, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you when you said who was going to be doing the electrical portion of this?
Sheridan Electric.
Sure. Okay, great. Thank you. I also have a question regarding capacity. I see that mentioned earlier that this will provide up to four thousand extra, but we have sixteen hundred new homes in some sort of approval. So that's going to leave us twenty four hundred more capacity, give or take. What do we say? I know Mr. Nobes mentioned decades, but what, what do we think that the lifespan with what we have already being prepared for some sort of construction? What do we think that lifespan is going to be on this plant where it's not even been, been built yet?
Through you worship, the, if, if it's any merit in, in comparing against the, the existing plan, it was built in nineteen fifty three. It's still in operation today. The actual use of it, fifty plus years is anticipated. Routine maintenance will always be required, but we would be talking a fifty plus year design of the building. When the capacity of the plant is reached per se, ultimately would depend on the rate at which the municipality builds out over time. So it would, it would ultimately depend on, you know, how quickly the, the building permits are being pulled and, and homes are ultimately being built. If it's, I'd say it's worth looking back over the last few years, we're looking at in the range of a hundred ish units per, per year ballpark.
So you're saying a hundred units per year is what we're going to anticipate future builds?
That, that, that would be anticipated at this point in time if, if, I think it'd be wise to look back on the history, the, the recent history and the rate at which homes are being constructed. But I would say we would anticipate being in that same range for the foreseeable future. Yes, we wouldn't see, I would anticipate seeing a thousand units per year, for example. I think the hundred units per year is, is reasonable. Might even be on the high end. Our recent development charges study was anticipating seventy units based on the economic forecasting. So we'd be in that ballpark.
Okay, thanks. So the sixteen hundred that we have in the system is an anomaly? Is that right? Where, anyways, it's, it's, it's not going to be an ongoing foreseeable amount? Is that what you mean?
I, if I'm understanding the question correctly, I would say of the sixteen hundred units that are, are approved per se, we would be looking at sixteen years of build out for those. And then the balance thereof would be an additional twenty plus years.
Okay, thanks. I'm a little tongue tied, but I was, I was thinking that if we have sixteen hundred on the books that are in some sort of approval for being built and they're not even built, it certainly didn't take sixteen years to get. to get to the point where they are right now. So I'm just wondering like what happens in, in two year, a couple of years from now, we get another big push and we get another three to four huge subdivisions like what we have planned right now. That's my concern. I'm just wondering like, is there, is there, is there an easy way to expand this? I, I, I just, I'm looking for some direction here to help me justify this.
I think I understand the question better now. It is, it is very straightforward to add additional cells onto the three, if we went back to the, uh, to the rendering, there are the the three large cells looking, um, structures on the site. Adding additional cells onto the site is not going to be a challenge. It, it would be a matter of, you know, doing additions to the existing footprint. So it's not like we would be looking at all a brand, you know, brand new eighty million dollar project. Again, in the future, it would be a much more modest amount to add additional capacity, more or less additions onto those portions of the structure as a lot of the, uh, the headworks, the UV treatment and, and other buildings on the site would be able to function with these additions onto those cells. I, if that makes some sense.
It, it does, and I really appreciate that answer. That's what I was going for. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Councilor Penau. Go ahead, Councilor Shae.
Now, this, you're gonna have to, I'm probably reading it correctly. What is the HST on a, a water pollution plant? Is it still thirteen percent?
Uh, through your worship, HST is thirteen percent on most items, but the municipality receives seventy-eight percent of the eight percent back and all of the five percent.
The only reason why I was asking that, Alan, and you're gonna laugh at me, but because it says seventy-five million, five hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. All right, excluding HST. All right, so the farmer in me, I'm looking down at the next, you know, through your, your presentation here, it says project cost and it says, it says construction tender, including HST. And it's seventy-six million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand. I'm going, holy jem, that's the lowest HST rate I've ever seen. And I'm going, Alan's not wrong in his numbers. I'm missing the point here because I'm filing my HST wrong on the farm. So, so that's what it is?
Yeah, so that includes the payable HST, so that the amount that we do not get back in rebate.
That's a lot better because I thought it was thirteen thousand right off the bat because that was nine million some odd dollars. And I'm going, holy jem, she got away with a million bucks. How did she do that? So there we go. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Mike. Is there anything else before these folks move on? Seeing none, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. So if there are no further questions on, on the construction piece, we'll move into the financing of this project. So as you can see outlined here on this slide, we're looking at an overall project cost of eighty-seven point nine million dollars. That includes the construction tenor, including payable HST of seventy-six point eight million. There are some additional funds that have been spent to date. There's about two point eight that's been spent on the, the project up until this point in, in engineering and design. And there's an outstanding approximately one million dollars still to be paid for those engineering and design costs. Built into this financing strategy, staff have recommended an additional one million dollars in contingency, which we will speak to a little bit further in the presentation, but this, um, we felt was necessary given the magnitude of this project.
So building on, uh, two slides ago, uh, we have built in four million dollars for tariffs. And that is based solely on assuming, uh, a fifteen million dollar price tag for equipment coming from, directly from the United States. We're assuming a twenty-five percent tariff as has been previously discussed by the US administration. And doing some quick math, twenty-five percent on fifteen million dollars of known equipment coming across the border. We're planning for a conservative approach at that potentially being all applicable. So we're planning to build, we're recommending that a contingency in the amount of four million is applied to, uh, to, for tariffs specifically. Now, when looking at the, the, uh, the listing, the ever-changing list of, uh, items subject to tariffs, wastewater treatment, uh, infrastructure or technology, it wasn't listed specifically. So it's really hard to tell exactly if at all, um, or what percentage thereof, those items would or could be subject to tariffs, however, we're planning on a conservative approach and, and assuming the worst case with, with all full twenty-five percent tariffs being applicable on those items directly coming across the border. We've also built in a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, uh, contingency, which was included in the tender. So it was a requirement through the tender that, uh, the contractors in, include that five hundred thousand dollars in contingency. And in addition to that, for the funding, uh, strategy staffer recommending that we add an additional million, again, solely to be as conservative as possible in order to avoid, uh, cost overruns and having to come back to council and amend the strategy on a routine basis. The intent is not to use these contingencies at all, uh, but we did want to set out, uh, a plan, um, for council's awareness, uh, and, and for the community that really was as, as conservative as possible, to take into account potential unknowns at this point.
Just to further, um, to add what Michael has said there. So if we are in a position where we do not utilize these contingencies, which is of course the hope of staff, we would look to reduce the amount that we would be requiring to borrow. Alternatively, we could also look to reduce the amount that we're, um, using from reserves. But I'll speak a little bit more about this when we get to the long-term debt. But generally speaking, what will happen is over, um, the term of the construction period, we will draw down in increments the required amounts, um, to fund the project up to what we are approved for financing up to the twenty-five million. And then once the project is substantially completed, it will roll into a debenture at that point. So we can reduce the amount that we ultimately, um, finance over the long term. So that's when we would not have to draw that full amount of twenty-five million if we do not utilize this, uh, four or five million dollars in contingency. So you'll see that at that point and that will come back to council, um, before we roll that into a formal debenture. Any questions on that?
No, don't see any. Go ahead, Alan.
Okay, so this slide just gives you a snapshot of, of how staff have recommended, um, that we approach this financing strategy. So as previously discussed, the total project cost, um, coming in around eighty-seven million dollars. That's inclusive of the maintenance garage, which is now completed. Um, I, I noticed that I had missed that in the initial slide, um, on project cost. So that is included in the total project cost of eighty-seven million. We were fortunate enough to get a substantial amount of funding, both from the federal and the provincial governments. And then the remainder, which will be the portion that's funded, um, by the, the town, if you will, will come through reserves at about twelve million dollars. We are recommending the use, a partial use of the PUC reserve, so the proceeds from the sale of the PUC at one point eight million dollars and the remainder to be financed through long-term debt at twenty-five million. And DCs will be used, um, to fund a portion of that repayment, um, which will cover off the, it's based on the DC background study, thirty-nine percent of the additional, um, capacity, uh, is related to growth. And that's what we're able to fund through DCs, um, which we'll discuss a little bit further.
So we just wanted to highlight, um, the, the funding that's been provided by our federal and provincial partners. We've, uh, been successful in retaining over fourteen million dollars from the federal government, uh, in 2020. And that was through the, uh, candidate infrastructure program for Ontario's allocation to the rural and northern communities infrastructure stream. So we were, uh, successful with working with our local MP on, on, uh, getting our, getting our name, uh, pulled up the list to get that funding from the federal government in 2020. And, uh, last year we were successful in, uh, receiving provincial funding just, just under thirty-five million dollars. And with that, uh, it is certainly making the project feasible. Without these contributions, we would not be in a financial state to be able to undertake this, this significant infrastructure project fully on our own. So a lot of, a lot of effort was put into getting, getting those, uh, successful funding applications put together and, and successful, uh, outcomes thereof. I recall being with council at Roma delegations and discussions with ministers, uh, prior to submitting those applications. And I think those really helped to bring, uh, bring our application up in, uh, in the queue in, in the eyes of the province. So, really just wanted to, uh, to highlight that for council and, and, um, I think it really helped, uh, get us, get us to this point and have a good outcome, uh, with those funding applications.
Thanks, Michael. Let's not forget the hard worker staff. I, I think we underestimate that. So thank you, staff, for, uh, making sure all of the things were in place for us to be able to do those things. So, uh, if it wasn't for that, then we wouldn't be here today. So thank you.
Okay, so we're going to break down a little bit more of the financing strategy, um, that was summarized in the previous slide. I just want to take a moment to note that, um, the financing strategy presented is, is fully on the utility users. Um, the reserves are the reserves only, um, of the utilities. They do not come from the tax base. Um, we are unable to fund any portion of this project through the tax base. The, you know, the, the finances for utilities are sep, are kept completely separate. Um, and you'll see that as we go through this, that, um, there, there's one area that they'll have an impact on the overall, uh, town's abilities. And that's in our, our ability to, to finance. But generally speaking, this is fully funded through user fees, um, meaning utility rates. So when we look at the use of reserves, um, utilities have three main reserves. They have a capital reserve, maintenance and emergency reserves. So we are looking to, uh, use a fairly substantial portion of these reserves to fund this project. Um, in addition to those, uh, regular reserves, we're also looking to utilize funds that are currently in the impost reserve and also, um, investment that is in, uh, as a result of the sale of the PUC. So in total, a combination of those, um, three, four, five, um, we're looking to utilize fourteen million dollars in reserves. So the, the general, um, capital, maintenance and emergency reserves are discretionary reserves. Generally, um, and historically, monies have been, uh, put into those reserves through our capital surcharges uh, and then used to fund capital projects at a later date. Impost reserve, um, was what we had in place prior to the full implementation of our DCs. So generally speaking, um, they're, they're somewhat interchangeable. So once the DC background study was updated, we no longer use the impost reserve, but they would have been, uh, collected previously at the time of new development as like a connection charge to be able to connect into the water and sewer system. And finally, the, the sale of the PUC, uh, that is a, a true investment. We, that is cash-held investment account, that it has been there for a number of years. So in looking at the overall strategy and trying to keep our borrowing, um, within an affordable rate, we are recommending partial use of, uh, the sale of the PUC. And just, um, to add a little further, um, as I mentioned previously, this is a large use of our reserves. Um, however, uh, this is what reserves are intended for. So, uh, you build them up over time so that you're able to support capital projects in the future. So, um, we, we recognize that we are depleting these probably a little bit more, um, than we would have, uh, liked if the project was coming in at a lower cost. But this use of these resort, reserves do provide, um, our ability, it helps provide the ability to borrow at the twenty-five million dollar rate, um, which is, uh, an affordable level that we can take on at this time. We'll talk more about how that needs to be supported in the long run, um, but it was important to make sure that we were, we were drawing on a loan that was, um, affordable to our residents and to the future growth. There's also, um, different loan streams through Infrastructure Ontario, which is the most likely lent lending agency that we will use. Uh, and they have a threshold, um, of above and below twenty-five million dollars. So if it's above twenty-five million dollars, it goes through three little levels of credit approval. Um, it has to go to a credit review committee and a, uh, approval through their board. Whereas if you are looking to finance under twenty-five million dollars is a, a more straightforward approach. Um, there is less, um, paperwork, if you will. Um, so we were looking forward to being able to keep below that threshold, both for affordability and to meet, uh, the lending thresholds from Infrastructure Ontario. Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Deputy McCovey.
Uh, thank you through your worship. Um, I can't believe this project's been, you know, talked about and going on since two thousand and eleven. It's a huge, huge undertaking for us. And yeah, staff has done a fabulous job putting it together. My concern is we're using up a lot of, uh, reserves. We've got a thirty-five or thirty-six-year-old infrastructure coming in from the lake to supply the water to us. As if we had any reserves put away if that decides to go for a failure because we have like one pipe in the ground that does that.
So as you'll, you'll see here on the slide, so remaining in the existing reserves is around five point eight million dollars. So that is still available to support, uh, future capital needs or emergency needs as, uh, if needed.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we weren't depleting ourselves because that would be a huge upgrade to run a new pipe up through if we ever had to. Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. Just to add further to that, um, when we start to look, uh, a little bit further in the presentation at our annual repayment limit, again, our borrowing capacity is still quite high. Um, aside from this, we virtually have no other long-term debt. So if there was a catastrophic failure in some other asset, um, we do still have borrowing capacity that we could look to finance if needed.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Deputy McCovey. Go ahead, Councilor Penau.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I see that on page, uh, twelve, we're under funding strategy, we see, uh, the reserves at twelve point two million. But then again, on page fourteen, we're showing fourteen point zero nine seven.
Uh, you'll notice there that the fourteen includes the one point eight coming from the, the proceeds of the sale of the PUC. So in the first slide, they're just separated. Twelve million from kind of general reserves and imposts, um, but I wanted to keep the PUC reserve separate for your illustration. And then in this slide that you're looking at, they're just totaled, they're at fourteen million.
Okay, great. Thank you. I missed that. Sorry about that. Oh, go ahead, Councilor Shae.
Now, Alan, I'm jumping back, back and forth. Uh, so the point is the contingencies you put in the earlier slides and all the different contingencies and the million dollars and the tariff contingency and all that other stuff, that doesn't come for tuition. Would that drop that number also? Because that we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to finance the twenty-five million because we're not going to be using that because you're going to be putting that back in reserves. Are you gonna use that money also to lower the twenty-five? Because I'm trying to get down the principal as fast as we can because the last interest that you're going to pay over the twenty years.
So I would bring that back to council, um, with both options. It would likely be my recommendation to reduce the amount that we're going to fund. You also have the option to, to spend less out of your reserves and maintain your reserve balances. But that option will come before council when we, when we roll that debenture over.
I love great staff with it ahead of me.
Absolutely. Uh, Mike, uh, yeah. Uh, go ahead, Alan.
Okay, so we've, we've spoke about this a little bit already. Um, so again, staff is recommending that we use fifty percent of the principal balance of the, the sale of the PUC. We do feel that it, um, i- is a, a good recommendation to maintain a portion of that in the reserve, given that we don't have really robust reserves. We do have some, but they're not substantially high. So having some, um, reserves left in the sale of the PUC, as is our only true cash investment, um, we feel is, is an appropriate amount. But that, that's a decision of council, but we do believe that leaving, uh, some portion there is, is good consideration. It really comes down to your risk tolerance. But it's our recommendation that we were, maintain that one point eight million dollars in that cash investment.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so as we've discussed, um, we will be looking to finance up to, um, twenty-five million dollars as we've, uh, stated. That may come down if contingencies are not used, um, but based on the, the financing strategy framework that we provided and the, the finances that are attached to that and the dollars that are attached that are all based on a twenty-five million dollar loan. It is most likely that we will end up, um, going through Infrastructure Ontario. They are a crown agency of the province, um, that supports Ontario's government's initiatives to modernize and maximize the volume, uh, the, sorry, the value of public infrastructure and real estate. They also just in twenty twenty, uh, late twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five, The sorry, the value of public infrastructure and real estate. They also just in twenty twenty uh late twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five. Rolled out a specific uh stream of funding for housing-enabling water infrastructure um in support of um the the. Province's funding that they released that we were successful in in receiving funds for. So. There was a recognition there that municipalities were going to have to take on debt to to service their portion of these larger projects. So they've rolled out this additional funding stream. There are a couple of different perks to that. Um there is a slightly lower interest rate. Being twenty basis points lower than their regular infrastructure rates. They do also offer a longer term. Being able to amortize it over forty years. We'll look at those options a little bit further in the presentation. It does make your annual repayments a little bit lower, um but the amount of interest that you are charged over that period of time um is quite substantial. So if we look at affordability and are able to keep the term as low as possible, uh that is what staff are recommending. So again, this also just touches on the fact that um during the construction period, we'll take it over multiple draws and then we will ultimately roll it in. So those. Specifics of the loan will come back to council. That's when we'll set the the interest rate, uh the term, uh the the total amount of the long-term debt. And again, if any contingencies are not used, we can reduce the amount that we're looking to finance. So this slide illustrates um what the loan could look like from Infrastructure Ontario based on uh rates that were provided all about a week or two ago when we got updated rates. Um and again, you'll see the variation in the terms between twenty-five years up to the forty years. The total interest that you pay on twenty-five million dollars on it over twenty-five years uh is around seventeen million dollars. If you take that over forty years, you're looking to pay closer to thirty million dollars in additional interest. So. If we are in a position where we can afford a shorter term, it's certainly going to be and is staff's recommendation. That we do that so that we're not um paying that additional interest um during that timeframe. Any questions on long-term debt?
Uh, Councilor Hicks. Or did you want to wait?
Through you, your worship. Um so when I see the asterix and it says repayment amount is funded in part by DCs. That that's one point six million dollars is per year over twenty-five years, correct? So. Is that whole amount every year covered by DCs or is that? The total amount currently that we can put into the the first year's repayment? Like, I I'm a little fuzzy. Sorry. If, do you understand my question? Okay, thank.
So if we look to the next slide here, hopefully that will help answer your question. So um of the repayment amount, the total repayment. Of the one point six million dollars, um we are able to fund approximately six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars each year from DCs. Against that repayment. So you can finance both the project cost and also the financing cost. So part of that interest is also funded through DCs. So the the strategy that we're going forward with are recommending is is the repayment on the loan. So. If you take the six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars over twenty-five years. What's covered in the background study was, uh what was it, thirteen million dollars um for the project plus an additional, I think, three million dollars for financing. So that um is what makes up the portion that's DC-able. So it's it's thirty-nine percent of the overall cost that's. That's right. And and the benefit of the um grant funds are applied before you look at that growth. So the the future users also get the benefit of the grant. Um so you take those amounts off and then you do your calculations.
Great, thanks. Uh thanks, Councilor Hicks. Oh, Councilor Shaq.
Might as well make it clear with such a large purchase for it for myself. So the DCs, so there's certain portion that goes to fire, recreation, and all the different departments. So. I understand the impost that's strictly for, you know, public utilities, but the d- the development charges for the DCs. The six hundred and fifty-five, seven thousand dollars per year, all right? Is that sustainable over the next twenty years? The six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, we're going to have thirty-nine percent every year to come up with that. Because of the growth and and we're only getting thirty-nine percent of the DCs?
So they are growth projections um built into the background study, which has this built into it. So there is a risk that within the water, sorry, the wastewater-specific DC. We may not have six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. However, um at this point in time, we have three point four million dollars in the bank in collected DCs to this point. Spread across the range of of DC pockets. You can borrow from those pockets um and repay them back. So. In the short term, we could lean into that if needed. Um but we're hopeful that um the growth projections within the DC background study are are relatively accurate. And actually maybe even lower than what we had originally anticipated. Um so I I do think that six hundred and fifty thousand, if six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars is doable.
That's. I haven't been able to catch you yet, so this is good. Uh it now, the if we have a large industry come in. That DC would still be applicable to the public utilities, even though if it might not be on a public utilities. I'm thinking about the, you know, I- I tour expansions, certain other things. If there's a development charge there that we can still use that. Certain portion or the thirty-nine percent towards this. I'm just trying to bring down the interest rate or not the interest, but the principal as fast as we can. You know what I mean? So we're not paying seventeen million dollars in interest.
Yeah, through so through your worship, um we have a uh I'll say an urban and a rural rate, per se, on where services are available versus services are not available. So if there's a large industry that comes in, excuse me, on uh in the rural area, uh there wouldn't be applicable. The the wastewater and water rates wouldn't be applicable in that instance. But if we have a large industry coming in into the into the urban area where the where the services are available. And they're a low user, they're still subject to the rate. Great, thanks, uh Councilor Shaq. Uh go ahead.
Okay, if there's no further questions on on development charges, um we'll just move on to the next slide here to speak about our annual repayment limit. So our annual repayment limit is a. Limit that is set by the province um that tells municipalities how much borrowing capacity they have. Um and that is. Encompassed of the entire municipality. So when we look at what impacts this project will have on the um municipality as a whole, this is one area. That that will impact. So if you, if our annual repayment limit i- is whole, um we're looking to use thirty-three percent of it. So one-third of our annual repayment limit will be um tied up in this debenture. Limiting our ability to borrow against other capital projects that would be potentially on the town side. Thirty-three percent is is still very low. Uh we are well positioned as a municipality where we have virtually no other debt. With the exception of this, as we as we turn this online. Um so as you can see here, our our annual repayment last year was at over five million dollars. And currently, we have debt payments of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So with the addition of the annual repayments of this plant at one point six million dollars, we're still well within. This limit set by the province.
Great, thanks, Alan. Uh go ahead.
So just to recap what we've gone over, um the total project cost uh of eighty-seven million dollars is going to be funded. Through a number of different revenue streams. Uh we are very grateful for the grant funding that we have received that is is covering a large portion of this project. We also, we will be utilizing um internal reserves that have been built up through utilities department um over time. And then we are looking to uh finance approximately twenty-five million dollars uh over likely a twenty-five-year term. In doing so, we will be uh required to have an annual repayment on that loan of approximately one point six million dollars, which will be split between existing users. Which is about a million dollars per year and then the amount that can be covered by growth, so covered by DCs, um coming in at around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Great, thanks. Uh, yep, continue on.
So I do just want to take a moment to talk about cash flow. Um this is a large project that we're taking on and cash flow does um. Have some concerns. Um however, we do have some mitigating strategies to be able to manage that. Uh one of the primary. Benefits that we have to the Housing Enabling Water Stream Fund is that they will outlie outlay eighty-five percent of the. Grant upon uh execution of the agreement with the contractor. So we will be getting those funds uh relatively quickly. Which will help us to finance um some of the upfront costs that we'll be looking at in the near future. Uh as we talked about before, again with our DCs, um we're able to um. Borrow from within the DCs if we're not able to meet the ones um based on the water and wastewater, sorry, the wastewater-specific DCs. Uh and finally, um reserves, as we've talked about a number of times before, don't necessarily mean that we have that amount of cash available in the bank. So we've outlined a couple of mitigating factors here. Um uh over time, we're making good strides to. To ensure that those reserve contributions are A continuing and that we're looking to pay down some of the other. Receivables, if you will. So any of our outstanding tax areas, our unfunded capital is a is a large one that's impacting that. That we're making good efforts for each year to to pay that down, which will increase our cash flow. Um we do have an operating line of credit and always have um that currently is at four million dollars and hasn't been utilized. Ever that I'm aware of, or if it has, it hasn't been in in recent years. Um so if needed to, in in the short term, we can utilize that. Um and again, we can look at some short-termining finaction options um through uh Infrastructure Ontario, as we mentioned, where. It's it's still part of the loan. It's just classified differently where it's a construction loan over the period of construction before it's formally rolled into the venture. So. We can have up-fronting upfront financing available at that point as well. Uh I will, one other thing that we could do if absolutely necessarily, although I do not anticipate this, um is is that we could fund uh through long-term debt, some of our other unfunded capital to help with cash flow. That's an option. Uh if there's not any questions for me, I'll turn it back over to Christie to talk a little bit further about the Utilities Department and what the future looks like there.
So we thought this would be a good opportunity to um just make sure that we're making it clear that we still have um other future capital needs within the Utilities Department that we need to. To essentially plan for. So um as mentioned previously, we're looking at about a one point one million dollar uh repayment from the Utilities budget. Just specific to the wastewater treatment plant project. Um but we also need to um have considerations in future budgets for um. Continuing to replace in-ground infrastructure. Um as mentioned in many um Utilities budgets, we have a few. More than a few areas of uh that are known for uh needing repair in the next number of years. I would say the next ten years. We have a section of sanitary on Thomas Street that's not in great shape. Um some um. Infrastructure and Water Street in Hessford that we've talked about for a few years. So those things still remain um in our um short-term plans. And we want to continue to um create budgets that will allow us to um continue to fund some of these projects. In addition to that, we have great opportunities with the county to jump in on some of their um future planned um in-ground replacement projects like. Additional sections of Dundas Street, Centre Street, and that sort of thing. So those are coming up in the next few years. Where under, we've undertaken a Utilities Master Plan. We expect to have the results of that uh before the end of this year, um which is looking at. Some hydraulic modeling to identify um future capital needs um specific to our in-ground infrastructure. But also in our water treatment plants to um kind of identify at what point we may need to look at upgrading other things related to growth. So those things remain um, you know, on our radar and we want to continue to build these budgets to fund these as required. In addition to this, we will need to at some point demolish the existing portion of the wastewater treatment plant. And this wasn't included in this um presentation because uh it it's so far out from the time of um, you know. I guess right now, right? We're building a plant, expect expecting completion in twenty twenty-seven, and then we have to test that new equipment. We're not looking at demolishing the existing infrastructure for a few years after that. Um so um. We were worried that some of the pricing we may see now could be significantly inflated um just because it's so far out. So we know that that's in the works and are um. We're we're undertaking a biosolids master plan and um we know that there are um likely or highly likely alternative options required for. The long-term turn, storage and disposal of um biosolids from the wastewater treatment plant. So um that. You know, it's not in the next couple of years, but it may be required within the term of the debenture. So we just wanted to make sure that um we identify. Or or make it clear that there are still other capital needs within within our community and uh we are going to do our best to. Create a sustainable budget to continue with these projects. And in line with that, our asset management plan um had identified a need for about two points two six million dollars. In our sanitary and water networks, um an average of that per year. So um. Within, um I think on the next slide, you'll see uh an example of uh future Utilities budget, but our target for about two million dollars in additional capital work isn't really too far off.
So this um is intended to give an illustration to council and the public on what a budget could look like in twenty twenty-six um going forward. You'll see there, I don't know, three-quarters of the way down, we're including the addition of the loan repayment, um the portion that's not funded through DCs. The portion that is funded through the existing users. Um and we also do include uh two point five million dollars in capital works. But you will notice um on the bottom line that we are not then contributing any funds into reserves. We're actually pulling a small amount back out of reserves at around two hundred thousand dollars. Versus in twenty twenty-five, um we didn't have the loan repayment and we did not do um any substantial capital in-ground work, but we were um. Contributing uh about one point six million dollars back into reserves. So we really have kind of three things going on here. We've got our annual repayment. We've got our capital works and we've got the amounts that we'd like to put into reserves. So based on our current funding model and our current rates. The the loan repayment can be absorbed, however, um the capital revenues that we get from the surcharge are directly being used in that same calendar year. To pay for anticipated capital expenditures within that year and we're not contributing to reserves. So unless um. Rates increase and or growth grows the revenues that we get on the utility side, um we. We will need to do those things. We're going to have to increase rates um to be able to continue to plan um for future capital needs. So staff, uh as Christie has mentioned, um are undergoing the Utilities Master Plan currently. Once that is completed, it is staff's intention to go through a full rate review. Um a rate review will look at all of those factors. It'll look at the planned capital projects as Christie had outlined earlier. Uh it will look at our growth. It will consider um the. The formulation of our utility bills. So what portion is consumption versus what portion is fixed? Um and it will recommend what our rate should look like over a period of time. Um so it's it's really difficult to say what are the rates going to increase? I'll I'll show you on the next slide. Um if we were just looking to add a million dollars on our existing base. Uh I think we're sitting around between ten and fifteen percent if you were do it to do it all in one shot in one year. Um we would not recommend that to council. That would come in a phased approach where we could increase rates over time. Um but also uh we are expecting uh. A fair bit of growth. So that means that the number of users um contributing to that revenue are also going to increase. So it's not necessarily all impacted on existing. Existing users. I'm just going to flip to the next slide so you can see that here. So um if we were to increase rates by one percent on the current um. Model, we're looking at about seventy thousand dollars additionally. Um so to get to our our million dollars, we're looking. Like we said, somewhere between ten and fifteen percent, probably around fourteen percent if you were to do it all in one year, just on the existing base. But as mentioned, that's that's not what we are recommending, but there will be uh future recommendations um before council. To progressively increase utility rates to plan for additional capital works and additional needs of the department um over time. Does council have any questions?
Deputy Mayor Calver. Through your worship, thank you. So just keep the people at home happy. There won't be any tax increase to the rural customers that don't receive water and sewer. This will all, any increase will be on the actual user themselves. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, yes.
Thank you. That's what I figured. I just wanted to get it out there.
Great. Thanks Deputy Mayor Calvert. Don't see anything else, so go ahead, Alan.
Well, thank you worship and council for, for listening to our presentation this evening. We're certainly available for more questions at the, the termination of our presentation today. However, ultimately what we are recommending this evening is that council receive our, our report and our presentation on the WPCP Plant Tender Award. And further that council authorize staff to award the tender to Peak Construction for seventy-five-point-five million dollars excluding HST. And further that staff and EVB Engineering, our engineers of record, be authorized to negotiate value engineering items with Peak Construction to identify any potential cost-saving measures that may not have been exercised or, or may not have been readily apparent during the detailed design process. Peak Construction does this, this type of work day in and day out. They might be able to foresee, you know, moving a pipe from one location to another or a door location or minor items like that, that would have cost-saving measures. We'd like to be able to enter, undertake those conversations with the contractor. You know, it is soon following the award such that we can identify those potential cost-saving measures and reduce that ultimate principal amount owing on any, any debenture. We're also looking for council to support the financing strategy and framework as presented, including fifty percent use of the PUC Reserve. And further that council authorize staff to initiate an application for debenture up to twenty-five million dollars. And with that, we are open to any further questions that council might have.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Is there any further questions other than what we've already heard with respect to the presentation or the, the comments made by staff this evening? Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, worship. Not a question, just a comment. I for one, and I'm going to let anyone else speak to this, but I've only been involved with this since 2022. And as Michael stated earlier, I know there's been a lot of hands and minds at work on this since 2011. And I for one, really appreciate the amount of effort that has gone into this. And I personally can't think of anything that has been missed or neglected to be mentioned, both risk-wise and opportunities. So thanks, guys. Great work as far as I'm concerned.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Counselor Schenk?
I'm going to spend this, since amalgamation, this is a shout out to the previous councils and staff working together because the footprint that this is going into, there was houses that were all around that. And the previous councils knew that in the future that this would happen. So we needed to buy the land from the houses, take the houses down to acquire the land to have this footprint as, as the town grew. So this is a shout out to all the past and just didn't happen overnight. But thank you very much for what you guys are doing. But this is, since amalgamation, this has been working on, working on, working on all the way along. Because at that time, when things were tough too during those things, there were certain houses that were being purchased that were going, oh my goodness, we need to buy it because it's for sale and we need to buy it now, but we don't really have the money. How can we make it work? So that was a shout out to the previous council and previous staff that worked on those projects also. Thanks.
Yeah, great. Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Is there anything further? Seeing none. And I, I'm going to echo what, what you folks have already heard. What we heard tonight is an extremely fair, responsible. And I know folks out there are going to say, oh, it's twenty-five million dollars affordable, but affordable way of, of getting this municipality into the future. I, I think it's, and I've said it many times, that, you know, this is the largest purchase, largest investment we've made in this municipality in a hundred and seventy years. And there are a lot of other municipalities, I think, would be wishing they were in this, the position that we are right now. Yes, twenty-five million dollars is a lot of money to, to take a loan out on, but it, it is our future. And, and, and I thank Michael for, for recognizing we couldn't do it without the help of, of our partners, of our, our federal partners and, and maybe more importantly, our provincial partners who I couldn't imagine having this conversation if we didn't have the funding that we received to get us where we need to, because if twenty-five million scares you, sixty million should scare the bajumpins out of you. So thank you for everybody that's, that's been involved in this process. Thank you and to echo Mike's comments to the, the previous staff. There can't be a Band-Aid left in this country because they put them all on this wastewater treatment plan to get us to where we are today and, and there just isn't any left. It's worn out. It needs to be replaced. And, and again, it is, it is our future. This is the future of our municipality right here. So thanks, folks, for, for, for putting together this, this, this funding strategy. Thank you for, for all the work you've done here. And, and I know it sounds really kind of strange and weird that, that we should be excited about a wastewater treatment plant, but we really should because it's, it's going to, it is going to give us the future that we deserve in this municipality. So thank you. So having said that, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the RFT UT 2025-01 Napani WPCP Tender Award Report. And further that council authorize staff to award tender RFT UT 2025-01 Napani WPC, WPCP to Peak Construction Limited for the sum of no greater than seventy-five million, five-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty dollars excluding HST. And further that council authorize staff and EVB Engineering to negotiate value engineering items with Peak Construction Limited to exercise any potential cost savings for the project, which would not exceed the listed tender amount. And further that council supports this financing strategy framework as presented, including use of fifty percent of the PUC Reserve and direct staff to bring forward any bylaw amendments that could be required to implement the financing framework. And further that council authorize staff to initiate, initiate an application to apply for a debenture, not to exceed twenty-five million dollars and to report to council prior to final submission. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Schenk. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Thanks, folks. It, it's, it really is a good thing. So next matter up for discussion is alcohol use in the town facilities. And Mr. Grant, I think you're going to speak to that. All right. So yeah, whenever, Mr. Grant, are you going to start or is Mr. Brown going to start? And whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship. So Mr. Mayor and for members of council, we just wanted to bring a matter before you with respect to alcohol use in municipal facilities. So I'll start off by saying the outcome here is, is in your hands. And however, we want to proceed with respect to the use of alcohol in municipal facilities, particularly our community halls and our arena. So our current alcohol, our municipal alcohol policy was last done in nineteen ninety-nine. It currently reflects the expectation that we would be having special events, special occasion permits for people to run their own bars within our facilities and sell alcohol. That's not currently the practice that we're doing. We, we currently have a liquor license and, and we, and we operate our own bar, which, you know, for the record is completely legal. But our policy framework is outdated and candidly needs to, to be updated to reflect either our current practice or whatever practice that we deem is where we want to move to in the future. So as mentioned, it was last updated in nineteen ninety-nine, post-amalgamation. It was done by a community effort where there was consultation and they, they identified a special occasion permit. For the record, a municipal alcohol policy is used to not only guide how the municipality conducts its business and make sure that staff and people that are using the facilities are aware of what the, the expectations are. It's also used to limit liability, to show that we've exercised due diligence in terms of the safe use or, or non-use of alcohol in our facilities. So we did acquire a liquor license in two thousand and four when we started running bar service. The, we currently host as of last year about sixty events a year on behalf of members of the community and that would include the majority of which happens in the Best and Bash Arena and the remainder at the South Fredericksburg Community Center and Selby. And we make a total combined profit excluding the hall rental fee of seventeen thousand dollars on liquor sales. So important to note that our activities are governed ultimately by the Liquor Control Act and Superior Court rulings. And in general, they would want us to ensure that we follow all applicable regulations and ensuring we have smart serve, check ID, we count drinks, ensure there's water and food and we ensure that we've taken steps to ensure that people don't drive home and take alternative transportation. You know, in, it is worth pointing out that in surrounding municipalities within our region, we are an outlier in running our own bar. A, the most municipalities would have a third party either released, a leased space, a bar entity or a special occasion permit is, is typically how that's done. Our legal counsel and our insurance would recommend we follow that model. And at any rate, regardless of what model we decide to follow, it is strongly recommended by insurance, legal and myself, that we would update our policy to reflect whatever practice we want to follow, including sort of a staffing ratio and model depending on the, the amounts of people that were expected to be at an event. With the above in mind, I would have a few recommendations for council's consideration. So I would recommend that we update our municipal alcohol policy to better reflect corporate practice that we are doing. I would suggest that we no longer carry a liquor license. I don't know that the remuneration we receive would be worth the liability that we're taking on. I would say that we would want to ensure that if we decide to, to cancel our liquor license, that we do so at a time when our license is up for renewal at the end of the year. So we can still honor any bookings that have taken place. And further that for, for the areas of facilities and that we would own where alcohol is not permitted. But like many areas in, in public government, sometimes you would find areas where people would have alcohol where not be expected, ensuring that our policy reflects what we would do in that occasion. That we include in our policies and practices that should staff become aware of the unauthorized use of alcohol or drugs in town facilities, that we would contact bylaw services during regular business hours and then contact the OPP. And further that we ensure all appropriate signage is in place and protocols in place to ensure staff is aware how to do that. And that is the expectation of municipality. And with that, Mr. Brown and I are open to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions or comments? I guess I'll, I'll start off and then I'll let, just, just to touch upon one point you just made there, Mr. Grant. Our, our bylaw folks don't have the ability to enforce provincial statutes though, do they? Or do they?
And so through you, Mr. Mayor, and I would ask Madam Clerk to weigh in if she'd have something to add. That I would say the bylaw perspective would be more from a, from an education perspective where you would have a uniformed officer used to dealing with education of people who are doing things that they shouldn't be doing and recommend people cease and desist. That might have the desired effect through education because they have the training to do that. I would say the appropriate place to enforce provincial statutes would be the Ontario Provincial Police.
I, I was just wondering, just because, I mean, if we're, if we're talking violations of the Liquor License Act or Trespasser Property Act or whatever the case may be, those things are usually fairly fluid. So when they happen, they happen and they're done. Say, for example, at a ball field that a cooler comes out and somebody reaches into a cooler after a ballgame at seven o'clock at night, unless you know who those folks are. It's nearly impossible to follow up as opposed to if it's obviously a breach of the Liquor License Act, the most appropriate thing to do would be call the OPP, but we can talk about this later. Sorry, Counselor Hicks, I didn't mean to jump in on it. It was just that one matter I just wanted to take to address. So go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. Jessica, we did, did talk about this in between meetings. Could you reiterate just for the public and, and for the rest of council, the cost of a special occasion permit?
Certainly through your worship, for a sale permit, the cost is a hundred and fifty dollars. There is a reduced fifty-dollar fee if there's a no-sale permit. You're just serving the alcohol to your guests at no cost, typically for private family functions.
So follow-up, for those that have planned a wedding and I'll say you might have anywhere from ten to fifty thousand dollars invested, you're probably having it catered. It's not a big deal to have the caterer run the bar. This is, I'm just putting this out here for context for people. And should you choose to run the bar yourself and have an open bar, it's a hundred dollars. And whoever is running the bar has smart serve. So I just wanted that it's not an exorbitant fee for a special occasion permit.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Counselor Penau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Matthew, is this something that maybe the town could look at contacting a service club and having them run all of our occasions so that it'd be kind of like a hybrid type of thing where they're using our facilities, they're getting the permits, but the services are being provided to the people who are booking the facility so that they don't have to go through this process? And therefore with the service group being there, that it also helps out their causes as well.
Through you, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Penau. I would say off the top of my head, that is, that is likely possible. I don't know what the level of interest would be. But I would say that would be done through a contract arrangement where they would hold a liquor license. I don't know if that would have to be done on a special permit basis or they could hold a permanent permit. I think they probably could do that through a leasing arrangement where we would lease out certain spaces for that use at a very low rate. I would say there would be, if, should there be the interest, I would say there would be a way that we could do that. I just don't know off the top of my head what that pathway would be specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Penau. Deputy Mayor Calver.
So if we had a third party running our bars in our halls, in our parks and all of our venues, still our property, and then go sideways, we're still going to be named it up. I, I don't care who the, who's holding the license. Took place on municipal-owned property. We're still going to have liability and risk. So I, I'm not in favor for doing away with the liquor licenses that we have. I'm definitely in favor of updating our policy, but keeping our liquor licenses. And if somebody does want to take on the, the opportunity to run, I don't know how long it takes now to get a, a special occasions permit, but I don't think it happens overnight.
Yep, good, Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to the deputy, Deputy Mayor Calver. So I think you're right, the municipality would maintain a degree of risk. This would be about the degree of risk. And so if there was a third party operating a bar in our facility, the onus would be on us through contractual arrangements to ensure that we had put in place that, you know, municipal alcohol policy that they would have to follow, that they had the appropriate amount of staff, that they had followed all the specific rules that we'd obligated them to do and we'd have to prove that we would have done that. But yes, we would still maintain a degree of liability as we do in any case of our facilities.
Thank you. Counselor Norrie, Counselor Martin, Counselor Schenk?
Through your worship, thank you. I'm in favor of keeping the license, but educating the public on how to get a special occasion. I'm in favor of keeping the license, but educating the public on how to get a special occasion permit because they get the profit. So. But I'm not ready to give up the license yet. However, if you do get a contract and then you could bring it back and we could discuss that. They put the horse before the cart, or cart before the horse, whatever. A lot of people, we have celebrations of lives that are three months after the, the loss of someone. That's plenty of time to get one, but a funeral, you've got a day. We've got one hall in town outside of ours left that has a license that also allows special occasion permits. So I would emphasize the signage, the new policy, keep the license, but tell people how to get it. Because we've never told anybody they can get a special occasion permit. And when they realize they can make some money and they go through the AGCO, they'll be, we'll have some risk, but not as much. And they'll make some money for their charity thing. So that's my suggestion. If you find someone that wants to take it over, then we could look at getting rid of the license and, in my opinion.
Thanks, Counselor Norrie. And, and I think Mr. Grant wants to reply, but we do have the ability to have both a license and to offer the option of special occasion permits, do we not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we do. So we directly reached out to the AGCO, the, the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario. And we can hold a liquor license. People can have a special events, a special occasion permit. They just can't have them in the same location at the same time. For, to, in response to Counselor Norrie, would it be, and, and to, to your worship, would it be the will of council that we would like to maintain a liquor license? Also to promote special occasion permits. And I can confirm that we, we have not promoted those over the years. We have not listed it as an option for people. And so should it be the will of council, we would include that in a permit that, you know, when people are booking things, we could let them know that this is the option. This is how you do it. Have a toolkit to make it easy for people to get there and, and get their own permits. But also includes what would be available should they, they want bar service.
Great, thanks, Mr. Grant. Thank you, Counselor Norrie, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Grant, you, you compare to other communities, did you compare to small communities? I mean, you, you mentioned Kingston and Belleville, but like the Frontenac games are different than the Raider games. I can see somebody, a third party running the bar at the K-Rock Center or the Slush Puppy building, I guess it's called now, but in, in Napanee here, it would be a different story as far as, you know, there just wouldn't be enough revenue for somebody to operate it that way. So I'm, I'm just wondering if you compared it to smaller communities as well.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll ask Mr. Brown to weigh in. My apologies if I misspoke. We, what I meant was communities from Belleville to Kingston with the, the communities in, in between there. But maybe Mr. Brown, you want to take that?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in. So we were specifically looking at community halls owned and operated by the municipality as well as arenas similar to ours. Whether a community arena, some have, you know, two pads, some have one, some have four. So we looked specifically at those situations. So when you look at, you know, the Belleville Senators' operation, you look at the Kingston-Frontenac operation, that is a little bit different than our situation. So we didn't include those. But we looked at municipal owned and operated community halls and spaces that the public was booking to have an event and how they were, you know, going about their alcohol. We also looked at arenas similar to ours as well. So just as a personal example, I live in Stone Mills. If I wanted to rent the Newberg Hall, I could take out a special occasions permit and have a bar in that hall, but the municipality wouldn't be serving the alcohol in that hall.
Thank you. Can I go on? Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm certainly in, in favor of having a, a policy for alcohol within the, within the community, that's for sure. I'm, I'm just wondering if you didn't dwell more on, when you're looking at, you didn't dwell more on getting rid of the license and just having special occasion permits? I'm just wondering, like the liability issue to me isn't really reduced enough to get rid of our license that we all. I'd prefer to hang on to both myself. And going forward, try to lessen what our staff have to put out with, if we can do something security wise or whatever we have to do at the arena or at the banquet hall, whatever we have to do without giving up our license entirely. So I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Counselor Mark. Go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to Counselor Martin. So I, I would say, yes, I took a very conservative approach on this in a liability focus. I, I tend to, I tend to like to manage risk. I think you'd probably want me to manage risk. But I, as I mentioned in the beginning, where you want to land on this is your privilege. So if you wanted to say, look, we want to have a policy that really outlines, because right now our policy is outdated and doesn't candidly, accurately reflect the way we're conducting business and it should. And as we're updating that, if you wanted to have a bar and also offer special occasion permits, we would build that in. We would also come back with some recommendations that I would suggest scale staffing levels. So there would be a staffing level for an event, a smaller event. And if there was a larger event, we might take a look at best practice and recommend something different and incorporate that into a policy about what we would expect. And we, that is certainly on the table of something that you can do. And the right answer here honestly is what council decides the right answer is. Because I appreciate liability is one perspective. Community good is the privilege of your table. And so deciding what you want that to look like is, is absolutely your privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you, Bill. I think I got, did Mike, Mike want to weigh in first and then I'll come back to Brian.
All right. So what I'm in favor of is make the policy, you know, have come up with a policy that's going to go ahead and is going to encompass all the, you know, the conditions that you want or what you don't want or, or, you know, just so we have some more, an updated policy. I am in favor of keeping the liquor license, but, but majorly promoting the individuals to take out their own license. That's going to minimize your liability. All right, for the sole pop problem is, is I know I'm not a youngster anymore, but this country always seems to live in fear. All right, a fear of this, fear of that, fear of wherever. I mean, you've got guys doing crack downtown and you have this and that, but you're going to eliminate somebody that's after a ball game is going to have a pint of beer or somebody in, in a hockey arena. So we've got a great country. I'm not one to have the fear and the liability, take ownership of your actions. If you do something wrong, you're going to have to pay the time, do the time and continue the way it is. So, but the point is, is for years, I've said this before, that if you were doing a fundraiser, you weren't able to take the proceeds from the bar in this municipality. Now that we're, we're going to change the power or have the policy that anybody that wants a fundraiser, wants to rent the Bestin Bash or the South Fred or Selby or whatever, there is liquor available. All right, that they can go ahead and do that and get the proceeds, but they take the ownership, they have to have all the correct, you know, bartenders with the correct sell smart or whatever it is called. All right. So all I'm saying is, is promote that and any of the other larger functions that they don't want to have, all right? For whatever function it is, then we will still have that option to do it and might minimize the amount out of the sixty. We maybe, I don't know what number we're at, but we'll find the data after a year. All right, we've got to the end of this year because this is our, not till January first or December thirty first, our liquor license is good for, gives us enough time to change the policy. But next year for the Raiders games or the rarely high, you know, occupied and people that are bringing in their own booze or whatever, I would suggest that when they announce, you know, welcome to the game. You know, it's, it's against our policy to have open consumption liquor in undesigned areas. OPP will be enforcing this, you know, welcome to the game, enjoy yourself. All right. You send OPP through a couple of times, the people are abusing it to minimize our liability. The people that are abusing it, they go ahead. It's no offense, I'm just, the reason why they have speeding fans, they're saying you can still drive. But if you go over a certain speed limit, you're going to get a fine. So you know what? You can still drink in our municipality. But if you drink other than where you're designated to, you're going to get a fine. But why penalize the ninety-eight percent because the two percent that don't follow the rules? So that's what I'm trying to keep, you know, that's my philosophy, my thought process behind this.
Thanks, Counselor Shank, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Now I'll go to Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, your worship. I was just going to make a motion.
Okay, let me go to Counselor Hicks first and I'll come back to you.
Thank you through your worship. So I understand when all the licenses expire, May of twenty twenty-six, December of twenty twenty-five and January of twenty twenty-six for our three primary buildings. So have we booked anything past those dates? That's my first question. If we can find that out. And my second question is, is the bar area at Selby, Bestin Bash and South Fredericksburg, are there cameras focused on the bar area as part of our, whether it's part of the CCT CCTV network that we have going or just internal cameras? And the reason for me asking this question is, somebody made the statement that two bartenders standing behind the bar can do all of the things that are required of the smart serve manual, which follows closely to the Liquor License Act. Count drinks. Now, if you've got a lineup fifteen deep and I buy four drinks and someone else at my table buys six drinks and someone else at my table buys two, and then I come back and I buy two. Like, how exactly does that work that two people are able to count the drinks consumed by three hundred patrons? I, I just, I don't think two bartenders, two bartenders may be enough, but I think a third person needs to be there just keeping an eye on what's going over in that corner. And where do our cameras reach to? So it's a two parter.
Through your worship, so I'll start with the cameras. So we do have camera footage in our, in our community halls. They're not necessarily pointed directly at the bar where you would be actually purchasing the drinks. So we could look at ways to, you know, increase visibility at the actual counter. So there is coverage in there, not necessarily pointed directly at the bar.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hicks. So say for a large event with two bartenders and how they count drinks. I'm not sure that's a reasonable expectation. And if it's the will of council that, you know, when we update the policy and that we're going to include both special occasion permits and, and bar service. My, my direction as staff would be a scale. So depending on, you know, the size of the event, what would be a recommended staffing ratio? To, to make sure that you not only had people, you know, doing bar service, but you had someone that was sort of overlooking the floor just to keep an eye on things. I would say that would be a reasonable expectation at a certain threshold. And to that, we would, we would likely turn to just sort of best practice and see what people will do to manage that, that kind of space.
My reason for this is if I'm at an event with my husband, it's his wallet coming out at the bar, mine. So he's quite likely buying drinks for me and bringing them back to the table. So the bartender has no idea how many drinks I've consumed. I could have had eight, highly unlikely, but I may have only had two. It's so, so I, I've, I just, that's where my concern is on the liability. You're putting a lot of pressure on two people to manage three hundred. So.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
This is just my experience from South Fred, kind of home area. Mr. Reynolds, I don't know if he currently still works, but one of the best smart serve guys. And I've been to a lot of functions in that place that's been packed. And a lot of people know me and somebody might be buying me a drink or whatever. He'll only say, serve two drinks per person, not eight or nine or whatever. And when things are slow, he'll go around to the tables and pick up the empties and monitor all the people if somebody brought in, slipped in some booze or not. He tells everybody the rules before the party starts. And through the party, there's always one or two people that want to circumvent the rules. And he has no problem saying, you know what? If you want to shut the whole place down, you continue this process. All right? So for somebody that can handle his job, because even I was going, I can't get away with anything here. You know what I mean? And he did his job. And I don't know if he currently still does or not, but, but he, he was great that way. And he knew exactly who was and, and I've had numerous people say, oh, hey, you know, you know, and he knew, no, 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 can't do it, guys. And if you abuse it, I'll shut the whole place down. So he, he, he did it right.
Yep. But thanks, Counselor Shank. Is there anything else? I'll go to Deputy Mayor Calvert. Just one quick question though, is, is the folks, the folks that we have that have their smart serves, they're, they're not necessarily employees of the organization, are they? We contract that out, do we? And so we may have somebody that's serving that has their smart serve that's contracted out that not necessarily is a member of our municipality?
Through your worship, so all of our bartenders currently are members of our staff, but they are part-time casual bartenders. So their paycheck does come from the town of Greater Napanee and they're hired as a casual bartender. Their hours differ depending on the amount of events that are, are booked in our community halls. We, we've had more than five before, we've had less than five before. They, they do vary. And it really just depends on how busy the events are happening in our halls.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chris. Deputy Mayor Calvert.
I'd like to make a motion that we, you know, we, we keep the liquor license that we have and continue forward with keeping it as well as educate the public that they can use. They can get their own license, run their own bar if they like and update our policy. Our policies are out of date, but I don't see, I don't see the sense in getting rid of a liquor license.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert, and maybe I can help you out with some wording there?
Sure.
And you can, you can tell me whether, whether it's close that council received for the report risk analysis related to alcohol use on town property and further that council direct that town's liquor license for town facilities be maintained. And further that council direct staff to bring forward a revised municipal alcohol policy that reflects best practices to manage risk and that staff create an operational plan and associated financial projections for how the town should update its event booking practices for licensed events to manage risk and liability. And further that council direct on duty staff as a matter of policy that if they become aware of unauthorized use of alcohol or drugs in town facilities, that they contact the OPP and instruct the public to contact the OPP during hours when staff, town staff are not on duty. Is that fairly close or did you want to adjust?
Pretty much bang on there, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by Deputy Mayor Calvert. We have a second, seconded by Counselor Shank. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motions carried. Next matter is access E one one. And Mr. Grant, are you going to speak to that?
I am. So thank you, your worship. And through you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I, I'm going to have a brief overview of our system that we call our complaints resolution system, which we call access E one one. This is the system that's available online where members of the public can submit a complaint about a wide variety of issues from property standards to other bylaw issues to any sort of complaint that we would, we would take. You know, from the time that I've had the privilege of working here to today, I, I have heard from some members of council. There is an ongoing issue with a standard that's been set in terms of notifying members of council about an issue that has come up because on our access E one one part on our website, there is a portion of that says, would you like to notify council of this issue? And there has been an issue approximately since the fall of twenty twenty-four where the way that council used to get notified, where you would get a link, you could click on it, it would take you to the, the general complaint, you would get regular updates. uh, was turned off um, or disabled um, by the company that runs access E one-one. Um, so I've heard about that issue from members of council. They, they've indicated to, to me um, more than one occasion and a number of members of council that when we used to get updates, now we're not getting anything, or when we get something um, that people wanted us notified, uh, it's not useful. It just tells us that there was an issue, um, but then gives us no information. So by way of overview, um, you know, the E one-one system was put in place um, uh, in twenty twenty-three, and it, it replaced uh, the report and issue system. The reported issue system was essentially uh, a notification system that CC'd, for lack of a better term, members of council on the, the complaint. So it would include whatever the individual complaining, uh, complaining or issuing their concern uh, to the municipality had said about um, whether it's their information or other people's information. Um, there was um, under the old system uh, and the previous councils uh, motions that were approved and put into policy by council that the ward counselor and later uh, other members of council would be notified of those issues, uh, and that members of the public would have the ability to indicate that they wanted members of council notified. Um, the council, when the new system was brought in, the policy was revised. I believe it was twenty twenty-three, and I'll have Madam Clerk correct me if I'm wrong there. But um, it was revised because uh, under the um, uh, MFIPA, the Municipal uh, Privacy and Freedom of Information Act, um, if an individual was including a third party's information, contact details, photos, or something else, and that was being passed on to someone who wasn't immediately actioning that complaint, um, you know, it was deemed uh, by staff when they brought it forward at that time, that that would actually be in contravention of, of privacy legislation and, and uh, solicitors that we contacted had the same opinion. And, and the gist of that is, um, on our website, if you indicate you want council to know uh, about the concern that you have, you can, you can tick a box and waive your right to privacy over your information, but you cannot waive that right for somebody else. Um, so that was the gist of why that was changed. Um, now, while the, the policy or, you know, itself was changed, the practice of notifying council continued. Um, I'm not sure why those two things happened, but, but it did. Um, and, you know, as I mentioned, in the fall of twenty twenty-four, um, the company that allowed that link to be sent to council and open turned that off. And when we asked them why that function was no longer available, they indicated for privacy reasons um, that that should not have been made available, and it was no longer available. Um, you know, I've spent the last several months taking a look uh, what our options are uh, in terms of notifying council and as well as taking a look at the uh, the tenants of MFIPA, the privacy legislation by which we're bound. Um, for um, a couple of options for council to consider about how we solve this particular issue, because I appreciate uh, we've made um, a service available to members of the public that notify, you know, a council member. There's an expectation that's been set over time for members of council that's not being met. Um, and uh, there was for a time privacy um, requirements that we, we may not have been meeting to uh, with the fullest diligence uh, that we should have been exercising. And so before I get to some of the options, I would say the privacy requirements that we should be aware of and how we conduct our business. Um, you know, so information is, you know, access to information that is, or has the potential to be protected under privacy legislation um, is a key consideration of how information contained in complaints is shared. Uh, under privacy legislations, individuals can waive their own right. Um, they cannot waive the right of somebody else. Um, and the legislation considers an individual's role within a municipality. So uh, an individual or group's role within the town, as well as the reasons for which they are handling that information is legally relevant. Uh, in this case, they're expected to be the ones actioning that request, dealing with the complaint, um, going to check things out, say, a bylaw officer going to, for a dog complaint or something else. They, it would be reasonable to, for them to get all of the information, including a third party's information, because it's for a business purpose. If it's gone beyond that, um, it would, the, the question would be, is it reasonable to give the information to another party who's not actioning specifically that request? Um, my perspective uh, is, is it probably would not be. It, 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 it wouldn't be. Um, uh, it's uh, under sections fourteen and thirty-two, underlies the, the legal expectation that information that is collected by municipal government will only be used for the purpose intended and not for any other purpose. Uh, in the case of E eleven, um, when we take a look at the system itself, uh, the intent of the system itself is to provide information to municipal representative related to a complaint, and the expectation that they will address that complaint. Um, that's, that's the, the main intent of the system. Um, I think in terms of a notification on, 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 to a larger extent, we've been trying to make the system do something it wasn't designed to do. Um, and that's reflected in the recommendations that, that I've made, but um, if information is shared for the purpose of the complaint, is shared beyond individuals who are responsible for addressing the complaint without the express permission of all individuals whose information is identified, um, it is likely that the sharing of that information would be considered to be done um, in the interest of, of convenience uh, and would represent a breach of, of the act. So with all of that in mind, um, I, there's, there's a couple of options that I would put in front of council um, to, to address the issue. So the, the one issue or the one recommendation that I would make, and, and I think is appropriate, is, is similar to the report that you receive already, an aggregate report uh, that we could put on, you know, and, and I would say we should have that on the website and updated regularly, and, and regularly would be what staff can do, I would suggest at this point monthly. Um, that's able to indicate the type of complaint, the specific location of the complaint, because you can geolocate that with, with the, the things that we have, and it would give you uh, an aggregate policy level look at what's happening, and would allow council to have a policy level response. Uh, my perspective is that's the appropriate place, um, uh, the appropriate level of information on individual complaints, pardon me. That being said, um, if it is uh, the will of council that um, you know, due to uh, the needs of, of members of council, past practice that we've done, expectations that we've set, that no, no, we, we would like to continue to provide the option of people to notify their ward counselor. Uh, the way in which that uh, could be done is when the complaint comes in, uh, anything that would be, you know, if someone has waived rights to their own uh, information, um, you know, a staff member could create a summary uh, in the system, uh, indicate, no, this is where the complaint's coming from, this is the nature of the complaint, this is uh, where, where things are happening. And that summary could go to the ward counselor or, or members of council about this is what's coming in. Um, and then um, at the end of that, when it has been resolved, you would know how that's been resolved. And again, they would take a look at that, um, and they would assess, and there would be some training required there, what information uh, is for information purposes beyond me having to action this specific request. And uh, if we wanted to do that, we can um, up, upgrade the system itself. It doesn't offer this option uh, E eleven, because it didn't contemplate this. Um, but for uh, at an upset limit of about twenty thousand dollars, they can create a different category that allows us specifically to do this, um, give people the proper notifications, um, and to ensure that council can get bookends, if you will, uh, where it's notified by members of the public. Uh, the only thing I would, I would need to know is specifically like, what information are you looking for, and what is the purpose that you're looking for, so I could have staff tailor uh, those things that they needed to? That isn't my recommendation, but it is an option. Um, and I appreciate the members of council who've raised this concern to me, and I apologize for the length of time it's taken to come back to you. Uh, and with that, I'm uh, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, Deputy Mayor Calvert.
Thank you through your worship. Uh, I've processed a few of these uh, E elevens. Um, it always gives the option, do you want all of council to be made aware? You click yes, or you click no. I would assume when somebody clicks yes, they're probably giving up their rights to allow council to know about the complaint. Would that not be accurate?
Uh, to, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Deputy Mayor Calvert, they're giving up their rights, but they cannot give up the rights of anyone else's private information they'd have included in the initial complaint that they've made. So uh, they may not just be giving their own information, they may be identifying somebody else within that complaint that has yet to be investigated. And they're identifying, uh, they may be identifying personal information about that individual. And that individual who forms part of their complaint has not given consent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert, Councilor Penal, and then I'll go to Councilor Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Um, I've got a lot to talk, I can feed off of other counselors as well. I think that if we went out and asked the people of our wards what they expect of us, they would clearly say that they would want us to know that we have a thumb on the pulse of, of what's going on in our wards, and that is, that's the reason why I want this. Because I want to know what's going on, I want to identify trends, and I'd like to see what timelines are for be resolved. I don't want to be the person resolving it. I want to just know what's going on out there. The current way that we have it working now is not working. I have personally put in E eleven reports on behalf of people and have asked them if they want all council to know, and they say yes, so I clicked that, and I don't get that report. And I understand why. It's a, it's a manual system, they might be overworked, whatever the case may be. So we're really not getting a full, a, a, a full um, picture of what's going on out there. So that's one of the reasons why I want it on there. We're pretty good at doing surveys. Let's throw a survey out to them and see what they say. What I think that is very important for the ward counselor to know what's going on in their territory, or sorry, not territory, in their ward. And, and it would be the, I do believe is the expectation of the voter, the resident, for us to know what's going on. If we were going to get a phone call, or sorry, if we're going to get a report that could be a month old, that's too late. For us to get a, a, a phone call from uh, an upset residence that might have already had two or three goes with the town back and forth, or delays, it's too late when we get that phone call. The damage is already done. I have to do you, 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 you have to try to, to resolve the issue of what's going on. So I have an issue with that. Um, I looked at your face when I said that, now I lost my train of my thought on this. On that. So uh, I, I, I believe that's very important uh, for us to know this, and that the residents uh, will want us to know this as well. I'm gonna uh, leave it there, but I do have more. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Councilor Penal. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Um, so uh, a lot to take in there, Councilor Penal, and, and my apology, I, I, um, I'm taking in what you're saying, and, and I don't mean to distract you. So um, if, when someone puts in a complaint, um, and if it's not actioned properly, and you get a phone call, my expectation, and it would be that you can call any member of senior leadership um, that is responsible for that area and saying, I'm getting a complaint in your area that hasn't been actioned, and I would like you to go find out what's happening there. And um, they, they would, you know, my expectation is that they would find out, and they would come back to you and tell you in short order, here's where it's at, and this is what's happening. Um, I would say that um, knowing what's going on in your ward um, at an aggregate level, I, I think a, a monthly report does that. I think um, being expected to understand all of the different complaints that are coming in as they're coming in, I can't do that, and I don't think anyone who works here can do that. Uh, that's a lot. Because it comes off in many different areas, but I would say um, in addition to the aggregate level of information, if you get that phone call um, that this is not being actioned, it is your privilege as a member of council to say, you know what? I'm sorry that happened. Uh, let me call the responsible leader, and I will get back to you. And what I would expect from the team is that they're going to find out quickly. Um, because um, you need to talk with the constituent with that information, and, and that's candidly how I think that should work. Um, and I appreciate that not all members of council think it should work that way, but typically that is the way that it works.
Go ahead, Councilor Penal.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. With that being said, um, I'm just gonna go back to the privacy here for a second, but it all ties into what you just said, but phone calls and stuff. If a person can only give away their rights for privacy, and I understand that a hundred percent, but I also fail to see that once that they put in the E eleven report, that that information that they've provided is only shared with the person that's actually gonna do the action. I feel that it will go to maybe a department head, and then that information gets shared again. So there's the, the expectation of privacy is gone right there. Also, with that, now back to the phone call. What happens when the person does call me directly and says, Dave, I've got this issue, and as with blah, blah, blah person, there's the privacy gone right there, and it was done through a phone call. So there's no way of protecting the privacy through that, whereas to me, that's similar to the complainant giving up the rights.
Um, so through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I would say um, um, when information comes in specifically, you know, in a system, and there's more than one person handling it, the assumption would be that, that they're all actioning to solve the request from an operational level. Um, the expectation is you contain that to the extent possible to address that issue. Um, so it may go to someone going to their boss and saying, look, this is a complaint that I'm dealing with, and I don't know how to deal with it. I need your help. Um, I would say it would be deemed that those individuals are trying to action that complaint. Um, I would say that it would not be an expectation that on the front end of a complaint, that a council member would be actioning that complaint. Um, if you, um, but, you know, the, the information and privacy kicks in when we become in receipt of the information. Right? So if the information comes to you, uh, and they said, look, I need you to file a complaint for me, or I need you to do this thing, and you send it in, I mean, I think the expectation would be now you are bound um, by that information that you, you might send it in. Um, you have all the information, but you're not gonna go tell a bunch of other people about the complaint, about third parties and everything else, but you're, um, you have been the conduit by which that complaint has come in. So you're almost like the system itself. Um, and so if you've put in that complaint either verbally or through the system, um, then I have the expectation that I'm not gonna pass that information on to another people other than to action it. You have done uh, become part of the chain of actioning that with the information you've given. And then the expectation would be that we would take that on um, to complete the request, and that you would candidly keep the private information to yourself, if that makes any sense.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to take it? Take, take some time?
I think Councilor Hicks, and then I'm gonna go to Councilor Norrie.
Thank you through you, Your Worship. Uh, I like the monthly report, so please don't stop doing that, and I would like to see uh, if possible, high-level trends from January compared to February, March compared to January, February. I, I think that would be helpful, and I think it would also be really helpful if we could have, and I didn't see this, it's very, very high level, the heat map. It doesn't get into specifics that I can tell by ward. I mean, it's pretty small, but if we could maybe have a number, um, because I'm, I'm looking at it, and of course, the urban area is where it's red hot. No surprise there, but just, I, I think on a monthly basis, it would be interesting to see that. I personally, and I have said this before, if somebody wants to let me know that they have a problem, they call me, they email me, I, I got a text message, um, I still don't know who sent it to me, but I think I got the problem. I think I resolved the issue for them, or at least put their mind at ease. Um, and quite often, there is a third party involved in an E eleven. Um, if it's a neighbor versus neighbor, it's implied, to me, it's implied, when somebody gives me that information, that stays with me until I've either completed the E eleven on their behalf and sent it into the appropriate staff member who's going to solve the problem, or I'm going to phone the staff member and say, I'm sending in an E eleven on behalf of X Y, and you need to come back to me, because they have tried several times, et cetera, and I have never once been disappointed. I just wanna put that out there. Staff has never disappointed me when I've been looking for resolution on something. It may not always be what the resident wants, but we got a resolution and we got an answer. I have always said whether somebody in Counselor Norrie or, or Counselor Martins, if, if they wanna let me know, fine, but I get the thing and I, there's no information there. There, it, it tells me that there's potholes or, um, the cars were driving too fast. Beyond that, there's no information. I mean, if they really want all the council to know, they're gonna phone us all, or they're gonna email us all. That's the, that's the way I look at it. That's the direct connection. The E eleven, I, I support it as a tool for communicating to staff to get the problem fixed. And for staff to allocate resources accordingly, because to me, this is a work order system as well. Okay, we gotta fix the potholes on, oh, I won't use John Street, but we have to fix the potholes on Hesford Street. I thought was mentioned earlier. So that's, that's to me where, where it's, it's supposed to be. That's the primary use of E eleven. And I've said that, and right, I can tell you right now, I am not going to vote in favor of spending twenty thousand dollars on upgrading a system that we, I personally don't think we need. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Hicks, Councilor Norrie.
Thank you. I'm not gonna go over the history again. I'm tired of it. I started this in twenty nineteen and a lot is, is what Counselor Hicks said. Um, maybe it's because of my background, and I've thirty-five years I spent in Hamilton, but it's direct contact with people. So I now circumvent the system. When people call me, I settle the E one one, and I'm the complainant. And I have a list of those numbers. And I do my best to follow up without interfering with staff at all. As a matter of fact, I get a lot of calls from staff. But it also gives me a chance to go to their house and talk to the people and find out what else is going on. Again, maybe it's my background. So I keep it very simple. All these charts and graphs, I mean, I guess it's good for manpower for what you have to do, but councils should have to know who, who's calling, what's going on. And that's how I deal with it, and whichever way it goes is fine, but I'm gonna keep doing it the way I do it, and people keep calling me and stopping me and coming to the house, and, uh, to me, that's my job as a counselor.
Thanks, Councilor Norrie, uh, Councilor Hicks.
Thank you. And I know, uh, thank you, your worship. Bob, everything you just said, hundred percent. Now, in the talking to the resident over a coffee in their kitchen, have you ever said to them, now, would you like me to reach out on your behalf and call all my fellow members of council? Or send an email on your behalf to let them know that you and I talked about so-and-so four doors down? Because I think as soon as you do that, again, you're waiving the pri- you're, you're infringing on so-and-so's privacy four doors down. Is that, am I understanding this correctly by? They're saying, yeah, you can talk to the rest of council, but Counselor Norrie shouldn't be mentioning anyone else when he's talking to us. So, do I understand?
So through you, your worship, to Counselor Hicks, I, I share that understanding. Um, and so, um, and, and I don't, if someone calls you and gives you the information and says, can you send this in, this E one one in, uh, then they've told you all of the information, and now, you know, your way to action that request would be to send it into the staff members with the system that they use to action that request. Um, and then the expectation on you would be that you wouldn't call other people to tell them about that particular information. The, the other thing is, um, sometimes when those things come in, um, it, there are allegations uh, of wrongdoing, and it's not a proven fact of wrongdoing. And so, you know, whether, if it's a bylaw, uh, complaint that's coming in, it'll be investigated. And then there'll be a conclusion and, and that sort of stuff. So, um, you know, Counselor Norrie, there's, there's nothing wrong with you taking the information and, and putting it into the system. Um, and, um, calling other people or, or passing that on beyond the people, I, I would say that does go beyond what would be expected. Um, and, and so, Counselor Hicks, when you mentioned like, you know, and if I'm not getting, uh, if I, if in the event I wasn't to get, uh, satisfaction, I would call the, the, the leader responsible and saying, where is this? Um, and, um, my expectation is that staff would get back to you in a timely manner. And I appreciate sometimes members of council might send an email or calls and say, you don't have to get back to me right away, and I need to tell you, that's never gonna happen. Like, when I hear from you or my staff hears from you, we're gonna get back to you. Um, cause it, just by the nature of, of the governance position of that. And, um, so anyways, to make a short answer very long, I, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Hicks. I'll go to Councilor Shank, and I'll come back to Councilor Pennell.
This is my, only my thought, and it might upset people, might not, or whatever this is. All right, but my only. I don't wanna resolve the issue that's dealing with staff. Staff is paid to resolve the issue. If there's a pothole issue and somebody asks me, could you go ahead and solve that issue? And I said, yeah, we're gonna get it patched tomorrow. But Public Works might be going ahead and saying, we're gonna scarify that hole, and we're gonna tar and chip it. All I'm doing is undermining their job that they're paid to do. All right? So I, all I wanna do is stay in my lane. When somebody phones me with a complaint, I will look into that complaint. I will get back to you. I will talk to the appropriate people, and I'll give you the correct answer. But I do not want to, I wanna stay in my own lane. I don't wanna, I don't wanna know who somebody complained to Bob. Bob's doing it by E eleven, you know what I mean? Dave's doing it a different way. Everybody's doing it their own way. But what I've found is, is that I, I just wanna know the data, how many complaints we've had for, you know, for, in, which you've got listed here. And I, whether we need to change the policy or the bylaw to address the problem. But I do not wanna go ahead and stick my nose into Chris Brown because there was somebody didn't line the soccer fields correctly. All right? Or anything else. I get complaints on a regular basis. Yesterday, I mentioned this one to Terry, cause this was an original one, that the neighbor was shooting at the other neighbor. All right? And there was bullet holes in his fence posts. So I'm going, holy jumps, that's a new one. I haven't heard that one before. So I went to that neighbor and he wasn't even in my ward. All right? But I didn't wanna make a mountain out of a molehill, and I went ahead and took a look at the post. And then I went ahead and I said, holy jumps, it looks like somebody shot through his fence post. Then I looked at it closer, and when I lined my fingers on both sides of the holes on either sides of the post, well, they didn't correctly line up. But I, when I looked at it, I walked around the whole fence post on this field. Ah, it was a woodpecker. So all of a sudden, I showed the owner what it looked like. He goes, holy jumps, it's a good thing I didn't lose it on my neighbor. There we go. So I didn't, things I can solve myself, I'll solve myself. All right? But I just wanna stay in my own lane, but I wanna know the data. I, when I get an E eleven report, I'll be honest with you, I just erase it, cause I don't know the name. All I know is there's potholes, all right? And on some street. So can I fix those potholes? No. Am I gonna get out there with a shovel and tell the roads guys, hey, I'll do it? No. So I don't need to, all I need to know is basically on the data sheet or what you're gonna say, is say, hey, we've got this many areas. This is the problem. So when come budget time, and we've had that many complaints, all right? Over a certain area, and remember you want, you were talking about a service delivery review that we need to do. All right? So if we have a major problems with weeds or a major problem with recycling, or a major problem with the fire department or treasury or whatever, then we can go to the appropriate people, not circumventing them to say, hey, there is a problem here that needs to be addressed. How can we help you solve that problem? Whether it be policy, whether it be, you know, bylaw, or how can we make this run smoother? You know what I mean? That's all I personally wanna know. So I solve a lot of problems. I've had other, before this rain, there was a ditch and it was flooding up. And the neigh- and one of the, one of the individuals phoned and said, hey, it's gonna be backing in my basement. I asked for the roads department to clean it. They've never cleaned it. How can I help it? How can I solve this? So I showed up and I had a shovel in my back of the truck anyway. So you got a shovel? Yeah. Oh, we, we can't dig that out. I said, we're gonna dig six inches or eight inches in a ditch and to drain it. We'll have this done in twenty minutes. If I send the, every service that you ask for, if we get the roads department to come out with a backhoe and come all the way in here, it's a half an hour out of town. By the time he loads the backhoe, by the time you come here, let's dig it ourselves and have a nice day. The municipality is not gonna skin you for draining a ditch for water so it doesn't back in your house. They might say, thank you, cause we were really busy somewhere else. So I just wanna stay in my own lane. That's the way I like to do it and let the staff do their job. If they have a concern or a problem, or if I have something that I can't solve myself, then I will talk to the appropriate authority, which I've talked to Mike. There isn't anybody out there that I haven't talked to, all right? It's the same thing. I'm rambling here, but the first day, and I felt so sorry for the fire chief. The first day he re- removes the fire ban. And we have a grass fire in the ditch. Now, what are the odds of somebody saying, thou shalt not do this, or whatever, or bad luck? But the problem was resolved and everything else was finished. So that's all I'm saying. There we go.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Councilor Shank. Go ahead, Councilor Pennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Just to, uh, touch on some points that have been made. And I appreciate, appreciate the points because it gives me talking notes and, and stuff is that, uh, the way that the E eleven reports are given to us. I do believe are hand submitted, and therefore they have very little information on it, pothole, someplace, blah, blah, blah. It's been fixed. The reports that we should be getting are a little bit more detailed than that. Um, to, to Counselor Shank's comments of staying in his own lane, grabbing a shovel and digging the ditches. Not stay in the new lane and solving an issue. That's not what I'm after. I'm ask, I just want the data. I want the data because of what, uh, Counselor Shank did say, is when it comes to budget time. And when you have certain roads in, in a certain ward that are privy to a lot of potholes on a daily basis, I'd like to know how many times that we're out there doing this work so that we can adjust the, 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 the budget accordingly. I'd like to know what's going on out there. Um, and on the E eleven reports that we get now, as Counselor Hicks mentioned, is that, uh, it doesn't give very much detail. It's a hotspot that just kinda shows us the area. So this is the information. I don't want to go and solve issues. I don't wanna go grab a shovel and dig a ditch. I don't wanna do anything along those lines. But I think I want to know, I know I do know, I, I do know I want the information so I can see what's going on in the ward that I was elected in to represent. And I think that if we went out and asked the residents, they would probably agree with me that they, that I should know this information.
Thanks, Councilor Pennell. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Pennell. So, um, in, in, in terms of the reports that you're getting, I, and I just wanted to be clear whether it was the, the reports that we, that you've identified a, a challenge with that stopped giving you more detailed information, twenty twenty-four, and the individual complaints, or the broader monthly reports, um, that give aggregate information? Which one, I, I was wondering which one you were referring to there that doesn't give you enough information, or both?
Okay, so, so, so the way that we get the copy of the report now is that, is an email, kinda looks like a service ticket, says potholes. And they'll say, um, in progress, something like that. It may sometimes tell you the area, it may not tell you the area. So there's very, very little information on that, and I can show you after the meeting and show you what, what we get. And a lot of times, we'll get the, the email, the, the, what's provided to us. And, um, it's closed right away, so we don't get to see any of the information. If we go and click on it to see the information, we need a password to get into it, which we don't, we're not provided that password. So I can understand how other counselors are saying that the information's provided to us is pretty much useless because there's not any information on it, and I, I agree to that.
And through, see me, thank you, I appreciate that. And so through you, Mr. Mayor, I think the report that, you know, that I've included in the, the monthly report you're getting that has the aggregate information and the heat maps and where everything else, that would be a policy level report that would indicate to you, here are the number of complaints you've had in a very specific area. Um, you know, one of the things that we're working on with the GIS person that we have is how do we clear some of the things off her plate? So she can focus on more of the, some of the higher priority items. And some of them, you know, one of them would be like, uh, improving that monthly report you get, removing it into a dashboard, um, allowing you to sort of zero in on the type of complaints. Um, I think the, 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 the issue that you've highlighted, uh, to me, counselor, would be an individual single complaint, uh, where, where counselors aren't getting enough information, and I, I don't, respectfully, I don't think you can make a policy level decision on the one complaint. I think that staff is trying to provide the aggregate information. And if, if we can do better there, then, by, by all means. And, and while I don't recommend, um, providing, uh, information on individual issues that are coming in, I have provided an option for that. I agree with you, the way that it's working right now. Um, i- isn't, isn't of value because we're trying to use the system for a purpose for which it was not designed. Like, it wasn't designed to do that. And, and so in order to design it to do that, it's going to need a, a, an intervention by a software engineer uh, to go in and intervene and, and create a separate category in, in the back of, um, the system, which we can do. Um, that it alerts us, uh, we do a bit of training where they can do, uh, a summary of the individual complaint. Um, making sure that we've, uh, aligned with, um, any privacy concerns that we may have. Uh, or have been identified for us and, and our responsibility as information custodians. Uh, and then, you know, give counsel, give a counselor where they've indicated that, one on the front. Uh, here's what's happened and one on the back. But that would be an individual complaint, and I, I, I think the policy level uh, of resolution comes with the aggregate report. And if there are, are challenges with that in terms of its fullness, or how it's provided, or the format it's provided, I think that we can certainly move to try to prioritize that. I think on the individual complaint solution, um, I, I, I've done my best to provide an alternative, um, if council finds that of value.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Grant. Thank you, Councilor Pennell, Councilor Shank, and I'll go to Councilor Hicks.
So when you're, when you're accomplice, when you're getting all this data and when people filling out the E eleven, so it, it doesn't matter whose ward it is, it tells you the geographic or it tells you what the street is if there was potholes. You're keeping that data. Is there any way you can put that data? Cause I don't wanna know the names. I wanna take the names away from e- everybody on council, the names. If they wanna contact you privately, that's their thing. But I don't wanna know somebody's name is privacy, all right? But what I'd like to know is that if we have thirty complaints on a certain road, cause it hasn't been graded, Councilor Pennell has that, they got a validity with that. So when we have the end of the month, we have a report saying we've had, you know, thirty-one complaints on this road, all right? And this is how we've solved that problem. That's data, all right? I just don't wanna know the names, all right? So as far as I'm concerned, take the names out of it, just go ahead. And if you don't send me an E eleven, I'd be really happy. I'd get it at the end of the month. All right? And then you, in the data, you will show basically where the hotspots, but I mean, that hotspot's that big around Appany. And Appany, I know, it's quite a lot of roads in Appany. But if you ha- in that data, you said, oh, well, on Water Street, we had, you know, twenty-eight complaints of the, a thing. So when we're doing through budget and we see, hell, hey, you know what, guys? What can we do? Whatever. That's all I want. All right?
And, and so through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, yes, uh, the, the monthly report, it, it does provide that and, and uh, behind the scenes, like the conversations I've been having with, uh, information technology and the team members is taking a look at the, what are all the, the tasks and workload that have come in to the one person we have that, uh, on staff that's able to do GIS? What are the duties that aren't as, as much value as creating the aggregate information that might be of, of that kind of value? Um, the, as in, you know, the, the work there that the GIS is doing with Michael on, uh, Mr. Knowles, on trying to, um, finalize, uh, the work we're doing on the, the real estate registry, which we're, we're in the home stretch. There's, um, when you share a system with another level of government, there are challenges with that. Um, and, you know, what I would, what I would like us to get to um, is, is rather than putting that together and giving it to council, either in a paper format or a static format, to have an updated database where you have the to have an updated database where you have the ability to zero in on the type of complaint. Um, whether it be types of roads and, and Ward Three on an aggregate level or, um, or things that are happening in terms of bag tag complaints, if that were to be something of interest to a member of council. Um, and, uh, those kinds of things to be able to zero in on that on, on a database. Um, so you can make policy level decisions. That's the direction of travel. Um, in order to get there candidly, I need to take things off GIS's plate that are of lower value. So we can focus on those kinds of things and, and that's where we're, we're trying to go. Um, the, if we were to update on individual complaints, and I have provided a solution for that. I don't think that leads us to policy level responses. I, I do think that, um, it, it would require some, uh, staff time to accomplish that, but if, if that's a value uh, and council decides that's a value, then we need to change the policy because it doesn't say that right now. And, and we'll implement it and, and an upset limit of about $20,000 is the cost of that solution.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Counselor Hicks.
Thank you through you worship. Um. I would like to see the new updated report and I'm in favor of shifting some stuff off of GIS because I think there's bigger bang for the buck in doing that than there is in spending $20,000 on something that I don't, I personally don't think we need. So when you say dashboard, is this something that it's basically a live document? And it, when you, you said put on the website. So that was my first, that caught my ear because are you putting this information out on a public facing website? So that Joe Citizen can say, oh, you know, I've had some issues with garbage pickup. Let's see what this says. Oh, look, there's been thirty-nine complaints this month about garbage pickup. It's not just me. On the backend of that, my expectation is, is that staff knows that the issue with the garbage pickup has happened all within a two kilometer span of, of coverage. And that staff is going to address this with waste management or whoever ends up doing the waste collection after we get done with the, the transition or recycling, I guess it would be in that case. Um, but they're the ones that are going to follow up and say, look, is this a new driver? Um, is the garbage not being picked up because they're putting eighty pounds of cat litter in this garbage bag and nobody can lift it? Is that why it's still sitting on the side of the road? That's their deal. Chances are if somebody doesn't get their garbage picked up three weeks in a row, I'm going to get a phone call. Right? I'm going to get a phone call. So, and then I'll deal with it.
Um, so, so through you, Mr. Mayor, um, a, a couple of things. So, uh, where I would like to go is, yes, I would like to have a dashboard uh, on our website that's able to have those things that's accessible where people can drill down and see where the problems are. That the challenge with GIS right now is, is, is in all honesty, we do not control our own house. Um, uh, the county has generously offered us, um, the ability to use their GIS system. Um, but, you know, there are occasions where we don't have permissions for certain functions and layers. Because when you own a system, you necessarily have to put in gates um, to protect, you know, your information. So there are times we, we don't have access to the tools that we need because we don't, we're not the owners of the system or we need to ask permission to use our own data. And I'm, I'm confident we can get past that challenge, but it is a challenge that we have right now. I would also like to get to a place where, um, and I intend to bring it forward to council where each of our vehicles, right now it's twenty-three of them, has what's called an AVL system, um, a, a data generating system that will give you all the data on, on maintenance and where the thing went and how long it was there and was, if it's a snowplow, was the wing down and all that stuff. And that, and it would be kind of, I think, nice to be able to put that on the website and like, where's my plow? And so if you're looking to get out, and, and we did this in Hamilton, but we had named the plow and plowing the plow face one. And, you know, I don't know how I feel about that, but, um, the, uh, the, you can actually see where the plow is and you can make decisions like, am I, is, is this thing going to be cleared in time for me to get to work? Or do I have to call my boss and say I'm going to be late because the plow is like twenty minutes out? And so that's where I would like to take us. And in order to do that, um, candidly, there's a number of things on our, our GIS person's plate who's also our map person. Who's also a number, who is also our survey person. And so we're going to have to take a look, um, and Ellen and Michael and I have, and, and SLT have had these preliminary conversations of, okay. What is coming off the list here? And what is our priority? Um, because not unlike, uh, sort of communications where, you know, there were times when they were going around and posting handbills on, on post boards in different places around town. Um, and, and, you know, currently doing, um, uh, administrative work for, for granting programs, which is not arguably communications. There are some things that need to come off the plate and prioritizing what they're working on. And, and I think the E one-one aggregate system, so you can drill down. I want to know about roads. I want to know about road complaints, uh, in Ward Three. And I want to know about Buttermilk Falls Road, if that road's of interest to you, Counselor Penel. Um, but I, I want to know about that because, because if you're going to make policy level decisions, you have to know where the problems are. And that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. It's candidly more difficult to get at that if, if we're also focusing on individual complaints because that's extra work that doesn't get us to the aggregate level. Um, and while I'm not in favor of doing that. Um, I appreciate that expectation has been set in the past and that's why I endeavored to bring you a solution to do that. I don't like the price tag either. Um, but when I asked, um, them to go to the company and say, look, we'd like to do this, that's the price tag they gave us. So.
Thanks, Mr. Grant. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, worship. Uh, so just to move things along and see where we're at. I would like to move staff recommendation that council received the report, access the eleven. And further that council directs staff to adopt option one in the report, which will involve the production of a monthly report on E eleven that provides aggregate information on all complaints, including complaint types and the geographic location where the complaint was made. And what was about.
And you're going to make that way, by way of motion, Counselor Hicks?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Shank. Um, is there any comments? I'm going to weigh in here at some point. Uh, is there any comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I won't go over everything everybody else has said, but I, I definitely agree with Counselor Norrie and Counselor Penel. The bottom line is, we want to know what's going on in our ward. If somebody has a complaint, we want to know what it is or who it is. And there's no reason in the world that we can't be trusted with names. I, I, I don't understand the, uh, the issue of, uh, privacy, to be honest with you. I, I understand you're saying that the person on the other end hasn't given his permission. But chances are, there isn't any person on the other end. It's just that one person making a complaint about a dog or a pothole. Their garbage wasn't picked up, whatever, but it doesn't necessarily mean there actually is another person. And as far as E eleven goes, it's worse than what we had before. The reported issue, uh, system we had, my first count on council was actually better than what we have now. So I, you know, if you can weigh those two things together, um, and like I say, I, I, we want to know, as counselors, we want to know if one of our residents is having a problem. We don't necessarily have to jump in and solve it. We just want to know. And I don't understand why a staff member can't pick up a phone and call us. Or text us or email us and just tell us what the issue is, what they're planning on doing or what they've already done. I, I don't think that would take a lot of time.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Martin. Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, worship. Uh, let me just go to the aggregate report. Cause please, I'd just like to state, please do not call me for every complaint that comes in every month. I, I, because I can't take that many phone calls. Used to be, I think I, I saw like thirty-four complaints here. And it's if they want me, if they want my involvement, they're going to reach out to me. My phone number is everywhere. Both phone numbers are everywhere. If it's something that they truly think that I need to get involved in, they're going to contact me. And usually when they contact me, I'm the one that does the eleven for them. So, uh, to go backwards, in, in response to Counselor Martin, to go backwards to what we had before. That's not going to give us the aggregate data that, that we're striving for so that we can have complete and accurate knowledge on what type of complaint, exactly where it was located. It would tell you the ward. It could probably tell you, I guess, if you wanted it to the resolution. It'll certainly tell you in how many days it was resolved. And I think it's the rare occasion when it's not resolved, I'll say within a business week. Or at least a response made and, and process started to resolve it. But I, I just do I want to know, um, that there were, there was a dead animal? It came in on an E eleven report? Do I need to know that there was a dead animal on the side of the road? No.
So if I, if, if I'm
Go ahead, Mr. Grant, then we'll go to, uh, Counselor Penel and then, uh,
And so a, a, a couple of things, and, and so I, I appreciate, um, council has an interest in, in knowing what's, what's happening in, in their wards and fair enough. Um, I would say the old system working better. Um, I don't know that I agree with that. I think it might have informed you more quickly and, and given you what you needed. I think on a staff level of resolving the actual complaint, it, it was not better. Um, it did not give the actual tool to resolve the complaint. Um, and, and from a, a privacy perspective, um, it, it did not, it didn't help us, um, adhere to what would the minus or the, the Privacy Act would, would require of us. Um, sort of um, it just, it's, it's, it doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're doing other, all the other things in a day and you're responding to complaints and trying to resolve them.
You know what? I contacted your staff and they fixed the problem. I just wanted to say thank you very much. Or they're going to call me and say, I got this problem. Can you help me? And I'll do an E eleven. But either way, if they want me to know about it, they'll let me know. And, and clicking let all of council know, that's just, that's just a button. They don't know if we've all been communicated or not. Uh, if anybody is actually still watching this meeting, I'm sure that they would find this discussion fascinating. Um, just about every call I get involves two parties. The person calling me and the person they're complaining about. And the person that they're complaining about wouldn't appreciate an additional six people. I don't think, knowing that their neighbor had a problem with them. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Go to Counselor Penel and then Counselor Martin. Then I think we're going to, if there's nothing else, we're going to call the vote, but I'd like to weigh in when we get done. So go ahead, Counsel Penel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. So, so here's here's an indication of my issues. Is I'm looking at the report that was provided to us, which is provided to us on a monthly basis. I'm looking at the cases by category, open or close. There's bag tags. There was nineteen issues. It doesn't state what the bag tags issues were. As I look around this room and we're all responsible for setting policies. We're talking about bag tags. When it comes to another discussion, wouldn't you like to know what the issues were with those bag tags, whether it was that they didn't, didn't get them in the mail? Or if the price is too high, or if there's a, just a general complaint against them. I would like to know this so that we can make informed decisions going forward. Not simply just seeing bag tags nineteen. Or garbage recycling, uh, thirteen, or encampment concerns. What was, what are the, this is a hot topic right now for us. What are the encampment concerns? There's thirteen of them. Is it that people are complaining, uh, of them being in, in vulnerable places or they're being, is it just a general that, that they don't like the encampments? Whatever. I think that it's more important for us to know more about these, these issues than just the amount that there are. And that's where I'm going with this. I need to know the data. Again, I didn't bring up the road, but thank you, Matthew, for bringing it up, but Buttermilk Falls Road. I need to know if this year in May, we, we graded it thirteen times and in the fall, twelve. And, and maybe the numbers go down and we need to find, find out why or the numbers go up. As somebody that sets the, helps set the budget on this, this is information that I think is valuable to me. And I believe, once again, that the residents will want us to know this information so that we can set the correct policies.
So
Good, Mr. Grant.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Penel. Um, so what I, I, if I can, I just to repeat back what I think I heard is monthly, we're getting the quantitative data, so we know how much. But I don't know what it is. Like I don't, I don't, I, and so for me, and that's a fair comment. That's fair. And so I think, you know, what, what I would recommend in that regard is how do we move the aggregate data forward? So you not only know how much, but in general, these are the trends of the things that were coming in. You know, we got, uh, there were X number of encampment calls and, and it's, you know, uh, it, it's a balancing act, but we, it's like the majority of calls were about fires. There were some about, um, garbage and there were some about abandoned tents. You know, and you can sort of break it down at a high level. This is generally the trends that were coming in. We got a whole, we got these, you know, in this area, we had road complaints. Um, in general, this month, the number one, like the X percent of road complaints were about lack of gravel, X percent were about potholes, X percent were about this. And I think what I'm hearing is if we could get to an area where we could get a bit more qualitative in addition to like just the amount. Or like, hey, I noticed there's an explosion of things over there. I would like more detailed information on the trends that we're seeing there. I think that's what we're hearing. I don't think getting individual complaints as they come in gets us there. Uh, I don't. Um, but, um, you know, saying that like, yeah, great, I know about the number, but I'd like to know about the quality of the kinds of stuff that's coming in is a fair comment. And I would suggest that I'm happy to take it back with the team if, if, whatever council decision, if, if they go with staff recommendation to say, okay, how do we build upon the aggregate data? So you not only know what and how much, but like, what's the nature of those complaints? And are they differing over time or is it a consistent trend over time? I mean, I don't know what the answer is to that at this particular moment in time, but you're not wrong to ask like for that kind of information so you can make informed decision. I think that's fair.
Thanks.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you. I think that's a, a great start and, and a great direction. I'll, I'll now vote in favor of, of this, uh, where I was going to vote against it. And just to comment on when you say that the individual complaints will not get us to a place. Um, much like, uh, Counselor Norrie, I keep track of this on my own. Uh, and that's, that's how I go forward because of the lack of information that has been provided to us and, and, and ways changed and stuff. So I do keep track and, uh, I'll, I'll look forward to, uh, to trying this new system to see, see what information we have so I can track that to make informed decisions. I appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Penel, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, but I think, um, my comments and questions have been covered, so I'll, I'll skip it now.
Great, thank you. Uh, is there anything else? I'm going to weigh in briefly. Uh, go ahead, Count, Mr., uh, Mr. Grant.
Uh, so this will be my last comment, Mr. Mayor, and I, and I appreciate the, the feedback from members of council. I would say this, this is going to be a journey in terms of continuous improvement. Um, and the, the way, the direction I would like to go is, um, you know, uh, readily accessible data on a dashboard, uh, that we can find and we, and we are able to drill down to the extent possible. And the balancing act that I'm going to strike is with the resources we have at our disposal. Um, where can I direct those resources to get the best outcome and what things am I going to have to give up? Are we going to have to give up as a leadership team to get there? Um, and my, my only request of council is as we go in a direction, whatever you decide, that we continue to get your honest feedback about how we're doing and what you'd like to see. And, um, my apologies, Mr. Mayor.
No, no problem. Uh, Matthew, go ahead, Mike.
One thing, yeah, it's getting late, so bear with me. It, it's not the lack of information. We're getting more information now than we've ever got, that I've ever got in my life. All right? Somebody has a complaint, they're going to get ahold of me. All right? The point is, is I don't want to go ahead and, uh, stick my nose in everybody else's business. So it's up to my job to know what's going in my ward and what's going on in my, uh, municipality from one end to the other end. All right? There was issues there with, uh, with, uh, uh, just past Selby with, uh, waste management, with recycling. All right? There was concerns with that there today. So all I'm saying is it's my job to know what's going on. A lot of people phone me, so that's great. But I don't want to go ahead and put a lot of money because we're paying everybody's wages where you could be making more money for the wages where you could be making more money for the municipality doing something, what I feel, that's only my opinion, that's maybe a little bit more constructive. Give us the facts, give us the data you have, give us the problems where there is so Bob knows in a certain area or you know a certain area or Dave knows in a certain area with Buttermilk Falls or whatever they happen to have in that area. Because when the complaint comes in, you'll know. I just don't want to know the names. You have that in the data, that can be very easily done, all right? So then we can address Bob's issues, Bill's issues and everybody else's wishes, whatever they happen to be in whichever ward they are by priority. That's all I want to know. That's it.
Thanks, Counselor Schenk. Is there anything else? Just briefly, I know we've had a good conversation with this, and I apologize if for some think that this went on way too long, but it's a conversation that we had to have. It was a conversation that we had to put to bed because as long as the E11 system has been out there, we've had concerns or discussions or whatever, however you want to refer to it. I've got every one I ever got. I went back through the last 50. One I got this morning at 9:38 has on the top, it says notification, case 555154, and then brackets, large pothole in front of, and actually has the actual address, has been modified. And it went from, the progress was from open to closed. That's the information I need to see. That's all I need to see. And from what I've seen of this, it's, I'm getting it. The one I got at, on the 28th of April in 2025, priority three, case number regarding public works, potholes, damaged asphalt and hardtop issues, large potholes in front of an address, has been created for your attention. So that's the one that has been created and I got the update to it as well. It tells me where it is, tells me what the problem is, and it tells me that it's been I like the fact that we get monthly reports with the dashboards or however you want to describe it. It tells us where things are. We have the ability to ask those questions. I have absolutely no problem with that. I guess I'm reluctant to spend $20,000 to add a couple of extra things, and I know that me personally, if I do, and I'm the same as Bob, is that when I get a phone call, I'll put the thing in for the person. And I make sure that the person's contact information is on there, that if there's any need to follow up with staff to follow up with respect to that complaint, they can contact that person. So, and when I do put it in, of course, I check the box so all council gets notified of it. So we just got to be cautious that we aren't the point of first contact, I guess. And I know that there's folks out there that think that we are and we should be, but we just got to be cautious that we're not. I like the system and the fact that I have a direct line to getting any concerns that I get when I get a phone call, I can get them directly to staff and they're timestamped, they're documented, and they go to staff. And I allow staff to try and resolve that problem. So in any event, I apologize that, I know the conversation went on longer than it did, but I think we needed to have this conversation. So having said that, if there's nothing else of what I have said, if there's no other questions, comments or concerns, we do have a motion on the floor and we'll call for the vote. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thanks, folks. It was a good conversation. Next, we'll look for a motion to confirm the receipt, for the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of Corporation of Towne and Greater Nappany. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. Read a first, second and finally passed the 7th day of May, 2025. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thanks, folks. It's been a very productive evening and we'll see you next week for a regular session of council.